7:00 PM, we will begin tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions, though not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Do we have any public comments tonight from the Board?
I have none.
All right. The only comment I'll make is that Mr. Alonso is not here tonight, and I will be chairing in his absence. Any public comment from the public tonight? Yes. And just please state your name and address.
Susan Wayland, 377 Flat Hill Road.
Good to see you again.
Well, thank you. Good to see you too, Mr. Vice Chairman. I wanted to ask a question as to whether or not we will have the opportunity for public comment after the presentation of the drainage report on Flat Hill Road.
You absolutely will. You and Mr. Allison will be part of that discussion.
Okay. And anyone else?
Yes.
That's interesting. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had to, I wanted to know.
All right. Any additional public comments? All right. To the Town Manager, any announcements tonight?
No announcements.
Okay. All right. So 7:05. So our first appointment tonight is with the Class II Auto Dealership License Hearing for Jose Iris de Oliveira, doing business at Lunenburg Auto Center Incorporated at 36 Summer Street. So we are not going to have this appointment tonight. We're going to look to reschedule this for a future meeting. So we have a, what came up today, as noted by our Building Commissioner, was that there appears to be concern with the site plan. So what's approved on the, on the location is a special permit for building. There are concerns about the location of the proximity of the roads, excuse me, proximity of the, of the vehicles to the road. There's also concrete truck that appears to be stored there. So before we can discuss this, there needs to be compliance with the special meeting, with the special permit that's been issued. So once we get confirmation from the Building Commissioner that that's in place, then we'll be able to move forward. All right. All right. So the next thing we have is a 7:15 appointment, but I want to pause on that and kind of go further down the list, because I think that, and I don't see everyone here for that. So if we can go to the 7:20 to meet with, get the, receive the 2022 second quarter financial reports from the Finance Director. Karen?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This will be brief. These, the first and second quarter reports are usually, well, they might all be dull, but these are particularly dull, because we're not very far into the year yet. Okay. So attached is, well, you receive the report. Attached, please find both revenue and expenditure reports for the second quarter of FY '22. And below is the summary of my reports. On the revenue side, we've collected $23,422,547, or 51.9% of our FY '22 estimates through December 31st, 2021. The breakdown of the individual categories is as follows. The local receipt estimate for FY '21 was $3,114,900, excuse me, $991. To date, we've collected $979,389.85, or 31% of what was estimated. And, excuse me, God. Below is a breakdown of the local receipts. And what we had was fines and forfeits. Our estimate was $13,263. To date, we've collected $6,701, or 50.52% of that estimate. Other excise, which is our meals tax, our estimate is $100,980. And to date, we've collected $73,364.48, which is 72.65% of that estimate. Departmental revenue, school, the estimate was $60,207. And to date, we've collected $41,163, which is 68.36% of that estimate. Excuse me, God. Payment in lieu of taxes, the estimate was $1,648, and we've actually received $6,352. Fees, the estimate was $176,052. And through December, we've received $76,228.88, or 43.29% of that estimate. Licenses and permits, the estimate was $331,188. And to date, we've collected $144,977.20, or 43.77% of that estimate. Departmental revenue other, which is basically our ambulance receipts, our estimate is $257,370. And to date, we've collected $128,867.62, 50.07% of the estimate. Investment income-
Excuse me, excuse me, Karen.
Yep.
Would the booth mind closing the door for us? Thank you.
Good, I get a chance to like, catch my, oh, God. Investment income, we budgeted $25,000, and to date, we've collected $7,832.3, 31.33% of the estimate. Departmental revenue, cemeteries, the estimate was $4,100. To date, we've received $3,790.24% of what was estimated. Motor vehicle excise, our estimate is $1,721,640. To date, we've collected $241,715.33, which is 14.04% of the estimate. Special assessments, estimated at $11,844. We've received $8,052, 67.98% of the estimate. Penalties and interest, estimated at $200,000. Through December, we've received $125,816.33, 62.91% of what was estimated. And miscellaneous nonrecurring, $211,698.50 is the estimate. To date, we've received $114,635.27, which is 54.15% of the estimate. So overall, our local receipt estimate, we've received 31.44% of what was estimated. One of the reasons why you, why that number appears so low is because our motor vehicle excise estimate is the biggest portion of this local receipt category, and we don't do the billing for that until February of, or March of this year. So in the next quarter, we should see that estimate go up significantly. For our tax levy, the estimate was $29,833,387, and we've collected 49% of that estimate as of December 31st. And we also received $192,587 in tax lien revenue. For our state aid estimate, the estimate was $9,242,812. To date, we've received $4,700,511.87, which is 51% of the state aid estimate. So all of our revenues are trending right where they should be, at the, at the point that these reports were run at the end of December on the revenue side. As far as expenditures go, total budgeted expenditures were $45,098,551.93. And to date, we have, well, as of December 31st, we have expended or incurred $22,918,610.79, which is 50.8% of budgeted expenditures. All the expenditures at the point that these reports were run, are running right where they should be as of 12/31/21. And even though you may see some appropriations that look like they've spent more than half of what was budgeted, it's because a lot of departments open purchase orders at the beginning of the year and just work on them, work off of those as the year goes by. So the, the expenditures, for the most part, are at the 50% mark. And that's all I have.
All right.
Unless you have questions.
I'll open it to the members of the Board if they have any questions for Ms. Broshu.
No, that riveting presentation was informative enough.
That's what I was going to say. Don't underestimate yourself. That was, that was riveting.
Well, I think I need a drink of water, but other than that, I'm, no, everything looks good. And I, and the next quarter, when I do the, the quarter for the period ending March 31st, I think you'll see a lot of good in that quarter as well, only because our motor vehicle excise collections actually start occurring in that quarter. And also because the tax collector had a tax lien sale. We have received significant amounts in back taxes as well. So for the next quarter, we should look really good.
Can you remind us when excise taxes are due?
I think the first commitment was, it, it's past due now. I think they would do March 16th. I'm not positive, but it was right around that date.
I think I'm on the delinquent list.
Yeah. So if you received a bill and you haven't paid it, you're going to give us a little extra money to go towards local receipts.
Five more bucks, I think, per bill, so.
I don't know if demands have been mailed, but you'll have to pay interest.
Okay.
I wouldn't park in any conspicuous location.
I do have one question for you, though. Thank you for, first of all, thank you for reminding me that I didn't pay my excise taxes. Appreciate that. It does, I will say, buying a new car, we bought two new cars kind of in the same year, awful. Don't do it. I don't recommend it to anybody.
And if you buy them at the beginning of the year, the new cars at the beginning of the year too, because sometimes if you buy a new car, but you buy it in like November, the first bill that you get isn't too bad, the one you get after that would be the big one.
Terrible. Bill, I wanted to ask about line item variances with department budgets. So I know that we have a lot of, you know, additional pages that go into your, the report that you provide. Is it possible to summarize line item variances? So like, in other words, you know, if we're halfway through the year, and generally we're at 50%, to have a better understanding of, are there any line items on the budget that are way off? Either have expended 100% or are at zero, you know?
Well, I mean, at the time of year that this was run, I would say that you would see that, only because like, snow removal, obviously, we haven't spent the majority of those funds, hopefully, as of December 31st. But I could certainly, I know I do it in the final year summary for you, but in this report, I could include just a summary page that has the breakdown of all of the appropriations and where they're at, so that they would stand out more. And then if you had any specific questions on any appropriations, we can certainly answer those.
I think it may probably be less helpful to us, maybe more helpful to the Town Manager. I know that we had a issue, I think, with IT spending that was a little lower than expected, and then next year, we kind of caught up to some of it, so.
Oh, and I think, yeah, the IT department in FY '21, there was a little lag in payment of bills. So there were some things that, the funds were incurred and the invoices were paid, but they weren't paid in a timely manner.
So that, on the incomers' report, then they would have showed up as already, the money already been allocated for it, so that wouldn't have triggered kind of like-
Right. It would have shown up as an open purchase order without an expense. So the purchase order would have been opened for the expense, but it wouldn't have shown up as an actual expenditure yet.
Well, then you, you've probably answered my question. No need to do any more work. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen, and lady.
All right. So we're going to go backwards. We're doing pretty good here. We're going to go backwards to our 7:15. And for the joint appointment with the Housing Authority, Pastor Dale Prue, I want to first pause to give the Housing Authority the opportunity to call their meeting to order.
I don't know, we did a little, I thought we were just part of your, your meeting. We're part of your meeting.
All right. Well, just have you as part of our meeting then.
For voting purposes.
For voting purposes.
We do have a quorum.
Okay. All right. So for voting purposes, you do have a quorum. I can see that four members are here. So what we have tonight is we have Pastor Dale Prue, who's requesting to be appointed to the Housing Authority. Typically, we ask Mr. Prue for you to come forward, you know, identify yourself with your name and address, then also to speak to your interest in this. And I will note that Mr. Prue is also on the ballot this year for this position, so there will be an election coming up here with your name on it. But if you wouldn't mind speaking to your interests now.
Yes. So Dale Prue, 138 Beale Street, here in Lunenburg. I'm the pastor at Pilgrim Covenant Church, where I started as their pastor a year ago. I've been in the area for, I was a pastor in Ashburnham for 13 years, from 94 to 2007, and then worked from 2007 to last year full-time in human social services, living in Westminster. So kind of my relevant experience, I was an executive director in affordable assisted living for the last six years before starting here a year ago. So those were low-income housing tax credit programs, like some of the housing stock that we have in Lunenburg. So I was at Haywood Wakefield Commons and Gardner for two years, and they had me serve at the interim at Christopher Heights and Marlborough for six months, and I opened Christopher Heights of Beltratown four years ago. Before that, I was the clinical manager of homeless veterans with Veterans, Inc. in Worcester. So worked for, with homeless veterans for five years. We had eight programs across New England, and a lot of that, of course, was getting them into affordable, permanent housing. They were prioritized with getting Section 8 vouchers, so they had preferences where compared, when I first started in human social services, I was a case manager and supported housing, like with North Central Human Services and with alternatives. And those clients, it took a long time to get a Section 8 voucher, whereas the homeless veterans were prioritized and they got them much more quickly. So I have a real interest in affordable housing. When I was in Ashburnham, I was on the Affordable Housing Commission. So that was not an elected office, it was an appointed office, but I was sworn in. So other than when I was in the Army, it was the only time I was ever sworn in for anything. So I do feel that I have a lot of interest and also some amount of related work experience. I was a finalist for the executive director in the Templeton Housing Authority, which is small, like ours, probably a similar number of units. But as I went through the interview process, I crammed on everything related to this. So I did read then like the training guide, you know, for the public housing. So I do have some familiarity with what the requirements are for a program such as this.
I'm going to, I'm going to open up to everyone and ask you questions. Would you mind speaking to, it's a little unusual for us to do an appointment into an elected role between caucus and an election. So would you mind speaking to, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you mind speaking to why it is that you are seeking this appointment now?
My, my interest was really just being able to start serving as soon as possible. And I also do have interest in, so I did a lot of work in your organization as a healthy system, and so bringing a systems approach. And I know that there's been some dissatisfaction and concerns that residents have expressed. And so one of the things I think I could also bring is really being intentional around better communication, better conflict resolution, working better as a system that really empowers the residents, you know, and not sort of a top-down approach. So again, I, I want to build rapport with my other committee members and the, and the Lemister Housing Authority. But at the same time, I, I do have an interest and a concern in being really intentional about trying to improve some of the relationships that we have with the residents.
Okay. I will open up to members of this Board first, and then I will switch over to the Housing Authority members to also give them the opportunity to ask any questions. Mr. Dwyer?
I really don't have any questions. Thank you for going through your, your history there. It's obvious that you're, you're well-qualified for this position, and, and I support the appointment.
Mr. Franco?
I'll echo what Mr. Dwyer said. I have no questions, but, you know, thank you for speaking to your background.
All right. And so behind you are four members of the Housing Authority, so I will-
We, we met with Mr. -
Prue.
And I, is it French?
It is French Canadian.
Oh, okay, so Canadian.
Yeah, so the L and X are silent.
I live on a low deck, French names, so I kind of could say. We, we met with him at the caucus, and we welcomed him, we, we had a good conversation, and I don't really have any questions right now. I think we have the Lemister House, and they do what I think is fantastic.
If I, if I wouldn't mind asking, you got, just to come to the microphone.
With him.
That'd be ideal. That'd be ideal. Thank you.
Hopefully, my voice will-
Thank you.
Everybody in town would like for my voice to go away.
I don't know if that's true.
Linda McDonald, Lunenburg Housing Authority. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Prue. Have you had a chance to go down through the Housing Authority? Okay. I, I'm very proud of how well-kept that place is, and I ask you guys too. If you have a chance, you go and buy there, please stop and see how well that place is maintained. It, it's beautiful. Now, you were talking about maybe some problems between the residents and the Housing Authority. Is that what I understood?
So any knowledge that I have would really be secondhand, so it's not like I'm looking to stand here and raise any critiques or concerns, that's really not, I just thought that I could serve and be helpful, you know, so more wanting to be helpful than having any list of concerns or grievances.
Okay. So I think that's a little premature with anyways. That's all I have.
Okay. Any additional questions from any other members?
Kathy Clark, 275 Crossroad. I, just to kind of reemphasize what she mentioned, I do think, you know, I had heard somewhat similar before joining. I went through the complex. My background is real estate, but also property management, going back to too many years ago, in subsidized housing. And it is a well-maintained complex. I think our Board primarily is a policy-setting Board, as opposed to a management-style Board, you know, just so that that's understood as well. So, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? No? And Deb, did you have any additional questions? No? All right. Okay. I think that we are in a position where we can vote. So I will, I think that we can do a joint vote here, so we'll do it all together as one. So is there a motion to appoint Mr. Prue to the Housing Authority?
I move to appoint Dale Prue of 138 Beale Street to the Housing Authority, term to expire May 21st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We will, I think we could, do we need to do this roll call? Okay. If you wouldn't mind doing a roll call for your Board. So you can start.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And on our Board, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So Mr. Prue, the next steps for you are to go down to the Town Manager's office, Town Clerk's office, thank you, as soon as you're available to get sworn in. And then if you link up with the Housing Authority, they'll advise you about their next meeting. And it is a beautiful property. I do recommend getting down there as soon as possible. Certainly, I'm interested in how do we add more housing, you know, to the town. I know that that's not immediately pressing on anyone's radar, but I think that that's something that we probably need to look at sooner than later. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will pause, and then we will get set up for our 7:30 meeting with McCarty Engineering to discuss, to discuss the Flat Hill drainage concerns. And I see Mr. Allison is on Zoom, and I assume he will be part of this conversation. And then I also see that we have some neighbors here from Flat Hill in attendance, so we'll give it about another minute here. You're going to share it on the Zoom?
Come. It's coming. It's coming. I see you.
So for this presentation, the Town Manager will share on the Zoom screen, which will then show up on the screens in the room. Everyone in attendance can follow along. There's also the Board, and at home can follow along, there's also the Board here in the room. So the format of this is that we are interested in your presentation. We will open it up to the Select Board to have any questions. We're also going to encourage dialogue with specifically Ms. Wayland and Mr. Allison, as well as other residents who live in the Flat Hill Page Street area that would be affected by this. And so we'll start with, with you, sir, so you, wherever you want to start.
All right. So my name is Brian Marchetti with McCarty Engineering, registered engineer in the state of Massachusetts. I was approached, I'd say a year or so ago, to discuss the drainage issue that the residents have been having on Flat Hill. I met with Rob Oliver. We drove to the site, drove through the Cortland Circle subdivision, kind of explained to me what historically had been happening, where the runoff's been, they think it's been coming from. And at that point, we discussed potential solutions. The Town authorized a survey. We had, we had them do a survey of Flat Hill and Page Street. So once we had the real survey in hand, and we knew where the Town's property lines were, so the actual right-of-way lines were, we explored several opportunities to try to introduce stormwater mitigation. So detention ponds, swales, roadside swales. So we explored several different means of trying to hold back, infiltrate, detain, slow down the runoff that's coming from, seems to be the Cortland Circle subdivision area that's draining to Flat Hill. We ran some models, did some preliminary design, but it was all preliminary until we could actually get out there and do test pits to see where the, now that we knew where the property lines were, we knew what area was available to us. It is a scenic road, there are a lot of large trees out there, so there's a lot of obstacles if we were trying to excavate. So we were trying to be sensitive to that. We located on the plan four or five locations where we could potentially put a roadside swell. But then we went out and did some excavations to see what kind of soil conditions were in the ground, how high the groundwater was. And in every instance, and this was back in November, I think we did them, groundwater was a foot below grade, 18 inches below grade. So groundwater's very shallow up there. So excavating a trench on the roadside in order to put the stormwater was going to end up in BMPs that were full of water all the time. So there was really nothing we could do that would be of any substance to actually detain a volume of water that would likely make a difference.
If I can just pause right there for a second, I'm going to ask Mr. Bernie, our land use director, a question as well. You may know the answer to this. In the subdivision itself, do these homes have basements? And if so, are the, do all those basements have sump pumps?
I don't know that. I haven't been to any of the houses up there.
Do we, do we know the answer to this? Any resident, if you, if you, if you have an answer?
First off, we have to say that the water's not coming off the subdivision.
And, and I, we will certainly give you an opportunity to speak about other things later, but at this point, the question is just, is if there's awareness of if the homes have basements, and if those basements have sump pumps.
Okay. First, I'd like to correction on this, as far as it's not coming-
Okay, first, I like the correction on this. As far as it's not coming off the subdivision, as far as Cortland Circle, the water's actually coming down over the, some property that's located just north of the subdivision and coming onto Flat Hill Road. And as far as basements, yes, all of there, all the homes do have basements. They have drainage systems as far as draining the water away from the basements and I know it, we had no problems at all as far as any of the homes having water in the basement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I agree with that statement. When I'm saying the Cortland Circle subdivision, there's two roads basically looped between the area where the subdivision was. So I wasn't speaking specifically to the detention basins and the drainage infrastructure within the subdivision discharging to Flat Hill.
Okay. All right, I just stopped you, so that was a question. If you wouldn't mind continuing?
Yeah.
You left off with, um, discussing how 18 inches, 12 to 18 inches below grade.
Yeah, so high groundwater.
Yep.
There's no infiltration. Uh, DEP standards, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, all the regulations state for infiltration BMPs to be effective. You need at least two feet of separation to the bottom, from the bottom of your infiltration BMP, which is the best management practice, to the high groundwater elevation. So we're, we're less than that to existing grade.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna break that down just so that everyone at home understands. So what you're saying is if the ground level is here, that whatever your basin is below ground level, that you need to have the water level below, at the bottom of that basin, the water level needs to be at least two feet below?
Yes.
All right. And right now, the issue is that water is only 12 to 18 inches below surface?
Yes. Yeah. So, and coupled with the grades down Flat Hill, it's not a flat road. So there's a slope all the way down the shoulder of the road. So, you know, when you're trying to build a pond on a slope, it's only as deep as the shoulder of the road and your lowest elevation, so.
So Flat Hill's not a Flat Hill road?
It's not in this location, yeah. So, so we're really trying to squeeze in something that just doesn't really fit. And I did preliminary modeling. You know, I, I did some back and forth with, with, uh, our DPW director at the time and he's a PE as well. And it's, it's just not something I could put my stamp on that is gonna work and I can say with a straight face, what we do isn't gonna exacerbate. Basically, take the water that's the trouble up the top of Flat Hill and just convey it down to Page Street, to the other neighbors. So, in a perfect world, if we had, if the town had a flat or big piece of property somewhere off the shoulder of the road, if we could build a pond or something like that and we were able to hold the flows, let it out slowly, then it would certainly be a consideration, but we just don't have that in this location. There's really nowhere available for us to, to fit these stormwater practices that would really be adequate enough or substantial enough to mitigate the flows before we discharge it to Page Street. So it's, it's, you know, without doing something much more substantial, you know, there's, there's an opportunity to possibly put a system underground at the flat parts of Page Street, like below the pavement. It's tearing up the whole roadway. It's putting a big system underground. Tough and expensive to maintain and we're stuck with the groundwater issue still. So no matter what we do, we're just too close to the groundwater in this location, um, to really do anything. You can, like I said, if you had a big piece of property that we could regrade, you could fill, you can make it work to get you that separation of groundwater. But we just don't have that in this location. So, you know, when we look at things like this, you always go back to source control. So see where the water is coming from and see if there's an opportunity somewhere there to hold the water back, slow it down, regrade. I'm not exactly sure of what's up in that area between the middle of the subdivision where the water seems to be coming from. If there's any land available that's, that's, you know, public land or something that, or open space land or something where it may be able to be mitigated. But I don't, I don't think that's the situation here.
Okay. So in summary, the plan is that all your efforts to try to come up with a plan has come back to the same conclusion that you don't, at this point, think that you can mitigate this concern.
I would say yes. Without, without going through a significant effort to try to put Band-Aids and small things on the shoulder of the road and make it, make, make small BMPs and small swales, that's really not gonna do, it's not gonna get the end goal, which, what we're looking for here. It's, there's just not enough available area and land. It's not flat. The shoulders of the road and the plans you can see are pretty steep, uh, with the exception of down at the bottom where Page and Flat Hill intersect. There's a bigger flatter area, but again, groundwater was so high there, right near the culvert that takes the water that runs down Flat Hill now and goes into the Page Street infrastructure. It's the perfect place to put it. There's just not much area there to do anything with. And again, coupled with the high groundwater, it, it's, um, it's kind of a, you know, futile effort, you know, minimum, minimum, minimum gain for a good, good effort. And you're probably not gonna achieve any benefit.
Okay. So I've asked clarifying questions, but I want to start with Mr. Dwyer, who works in this space. I'm sure he has some thoughts and questions for you. So, Mr. Dwyer.
Well, I'm, I'm a bit familiar with the issue. And I guess one of the things that, that I'm interested in is, is this area, I mean, Flat Hill Road, this is up. You wouldn't expect to get water in this area because you have to drive up a hill to get there. And I guess one of the things I'm curious about is, from what you said with the high groundwater table, is there a certain time of year that we're seeing, I'm guessing probably in the colder months, when the ground is frozen, you're getting even less infiltration than you're normally would? And then during high precipitation events, it's just running off everywhere?
Yeah, so we, we looked at, when we look at soil profiles to find out where the groundwater elevation is, we don't just look for water. So we assess the, the water in the hole if it's there. Weeping out of the sides of the hole.
Modeling of the soil.
Or modeling of the soil. So looking at all three, uh, several of the holes was, was weeping up high. They all had modeling and staining high, so it just seems like, yes, last year was a exceptionally high rainfall year. Like one of the highest on record. We, we tried test pitting for septic systems all summer long that we had to cancel and postpone because we just, there was so much, groundwater was, was very high almost everywhere.
Are these, uh, poorly drained soils, silty sands and silt?
Yeah, I don't have the actual name of the soil, but they are poorly drained soils in this area. So I, I think.
So, I, I guess my other question is, you said you agreed with, uh, the resident who came forward and indicated that, you know, the, the water's flowing through where the subdivision was constructed. So the way in my mind that the subdivision may have exacerbated the problem is there's more impermeable surface due to roofs and pavements and things like that. It further aggravates the amount of runoff you're gonna get, even if it's coming, uh, from a source, you know, outside of the, the subdivision itself.
It, it could be. It could be either, um, there's obviously with the increase in impervious area, that's why stormwater controls are installed to mitigate that difference in runoff volume and, and peak flows. In this case, it looks like there's a substantial stormwater system. There's catch basins in the street. There's detention basins out there. So it looks like it was designed appropriately, and I'm not saying it wasn't. So one of the issues could be, because of the age of the detention systems out there, the basins or the ponds that were built, you know, you see a lot of them there. They're overgrown with, with cattails and fragmites and there's standing water in them now, so the bottoms of these basins can get choked out over time if they're not cleaned up and maintained. So maintenance is usually the biggest cause of detention systems failing in any subdivision. So I don't know if these have been maintained, you know, historically.
Well, even if they hasn't, hadn't, to your point, if you have a high water table, they're gonna, they're gonna hold water.
They, they could hold water, but it just could make the situation worse.
Okay.
The, the other thing that could cause this type of situation is in constructing the subdivision, if some of the grades were changed out there, that changed the natural flow of stormwater runoff that used to discharge somewhere else and now it's directed in a different direction. So in building the subdivision, uh, it sounded like, and, and this is, this isn't exactly a hundred percent clear, but it sounded like the runoff that has been visibly seen flowing onto Flat Hill from the subdivision was coming through backyards and around a septic system that's now raised. It was, you know, so there's been some grading that happened out there in the, you know, recent or not so recent history that may have changed the topography out there that, that directed the stormwater in one direction as opposed to where it used to go. So if this is a problem that's in the more recent years, you know, we may be able to look to something or an event that happened out there grading-wise that may have caused it or made it worse. But again, we have to look at, historically, all towns and most departments are requiring us to model stormwater infrastructure now using the Atlas 14 Extreme Precipitation Data. In the recent years, rainfall's just getting more and more and more and it's getting, uh, the rainfall amounts are much higher. So we're making BMPs much bigger. You know, the subdivision was, was built decades ago where things may not have been designed with, with, um, you know, with the old TP40 rainfall data. So historically, stormwater infrastructure was much smaller back then. And now we have a lot more rainfall, so they're just not built to handle the storm or flows that we're getting, you know, in recent years.
Mr. Franco, do you have any questions?
I don't. I'm, I appreciate your questions and Mr. Dwyer's. I think you're, you're both in a better position to ask the probing questions on this. I'm taking the answers though.
All right.
Thank you.
So. So the frustration here, I think, and I'll, I'll speak, um, for our fellow residents, is that for the people who live in Cortland Circle, um, in that area, who live in, who are part of the condo association, you know, we, we, Mr. Bernie, our, our land use director, went back and looked through the permit that was issued for the, for the development. And, um, in that process, there are not ongoing maintenance requirements to the condo association for those stormwater systems that I'm sure today would have been required, but, you know, 20 years ago or so when this was approved, it was not. Um, and it sounds like from what you're saying is that even if there was, and I don't know what they've done. I don't know if they've done this one a 15, 10-year, I don't know. But what you're saying is even if they had a robust maintenance schedule for all of their retention basins, that it likely would not correct or resolve this concern. Is that a fair summary?
Uh, not necessarily. I, I think anything you do to maintain an existing pond is certainly gonna help.
Okay.
If, if the, over, over 20-plus years, a lot of sediment can build up in that basin.
Yep.
You know, you could, you could lose half the capacity of the pond. So I, I haven't seen the plans. I, I can't, I can't really speak to what the actual design was back when it was permitted versus what's out in the field now. You know, it, it could be a, a survey. You know, we could easily, easily execute a survey to go out there and do an ASBILT of the basins that are out there, just to see size-wise and depth, how big they are compared to what was permitted back years and years ago. So if their plans are available, that's something we can certainly review and, and see. But when I say the, the groundwater table issue is we were, we were digging off the shoulder of the road.
Yep.
On Flat Hill. Um, there's already some swales, so we're a little bit below the side of the road in a couple of those locations. So, um, they're not necessarily the same elevations as the ponds throughout the subdivision. So depending on the soil type, all the ground conditions, it could be very different where those ponds were. But it's something we won't know until, you know, we go out there and actually dig a test pit to see.
So, I mean, what I'm hearing on the other side is that, you know, we, what I've heard so far, just a quick note, was that we don't have water happening in basements in the area. Um, my understanding is that we have septic systems in that area as well.
If you notice, they're mostly raised. All the new ones are all raised now, so.
And I, and I, that was good in my next column, which is when you go through there, you notice how all this stuff is kind of built up. And so it would suggest that there was some form of awareness during the construction process that there was some issue. Um, and you can see that the homes are even kind of elevated a bit more as well as the septic systems. And so that may contribute to why there's no issue. I mean, obviously, we're not gonna tell people who live in the condo association, who've been living here for 20 years, that they need to redesign their condo association. I mean, that's, I think, outside of our authority anyway. What do you recommend as a solution? I know that you haven't, it's not on your, but what do you, what can we do, all of us together to resolve this, in your opinion?
The first place to start, I think, is the, the source. So is analyzing the source of this water. Where is it coming from? What's causing it? If it's the grades out there, if it's, if it is the detention basins, you know. I've, I've, I've driven out there during some rainstorms, trying to see this and it's just, it's not always readily apparent where it's coming from. I've never actually seen, and I've gone out there during some big rainfalls, the, the water that has been explained to me that comes off of the yards or the backyards of the woods between.
We have some good videos.
Both roads. So I, I've seen videos of the culverts flowing and I've seen the ponds, but I haven't seen the flow coming over the, out of the woods. So the, the source is always the best place to start. Where's it coming from? How can you manage it in those locations, um, you know, at the source of the issue? So I, I would certainly start at, up in the top of the subdivision, in the middle of the woods, wherever it's coming out, just to see what's out there, why it's flowing this way, what's changed in the past, you know, decade that all of a sudden this is becoming an issue. Again, I think the maintenance of the existing stormwater infrastructure is, is, is a huge problem. This, this is something we see, uh, commonly now in all old subdivisions where you don't have really good sandy soils that, you know, the basins, even though they're, they may be undersized, they're still performing well because the water just goes in the ground. This isn't the case up here. Just because all the ponds are standing water now, maybe they were back when it was built. I don't know that. But usually, once, once the infiltrative capacity of the bottom of the basin's diminished, it just holds water. And the more it holds water, the more grows in there and all the vegetation, the cattails, the invasive species, that all chokes out the infiltrated capacity of the soil as well. So, um, grubbing out these basins, just cleaning them out again, you know, could be a, a, could be a very good thing that restores the infiltration capacity of these soils.
Now, my understanding though, from the residents who've lived here for a long time, uh, is that the problem started once the subdivision was built. That it wasn't, this didn't happen 10 years ago or five years ago. This, this started, uh, when the subdivision was, was built. And so, um, so, you know, that solution of doing more work in the retention basins, while that may minimize, it's still not gonna resolve, you know, the issue that started once these subdivisions, you know. So.
I agree with that. I do. And, and that's, that's why I'm, that's why we were trying to put these stormwater BMPs for storage, hold it back. Don't let it go, you know, in the Allison's field and flood them out and, you know, you can't, hey, if we can keep it on the shoulder, keep it in the right-of-way, dig trenches, get something down. We talked about putting pipe systems underground that could store the water and let it out slowly. Problem with that is it's, if you're putting it down in the ground, you're burying the pipe in the groundwater table, it's gonna fill with water. And you're not gaining any volume. You're not gaining what you're trying to get. It's, you're kind of up against a wall here because groundwater is so high. The best solution here is to build something to hold it back and store it, but we don't have property available to fit upon. There's no flat topography to fit upon.
I'm gonna ask you, uh, my last question before I go to the town manager and the residents, is, um, I'm thinking Poland Springs. So if Ms. Whalen said, you know what, the town said we're gonna zone a portion of this area on Ms. Whalen's land commercial, could Ms. Whalen create a Lunenburg Bottling Company and start bottling this stuff and selling it and then resolve all these issues?
So I believe Mr. Oliver did approach the Allison's and Ms. Whalen about collecting the water at the top of the hill and potentially piping it or swaling it to the back of their properties and put a pond out there. I think in the back of the Allison's property, there is a pond. We're trying to just divert the water there and put it back out in the woods. And if it flows out over there, it goes through the woods and eventually gets down to Beaver Brook. So, yes, that was, that was a solution that we thought was, would work the best. It takes care of it, not at the source up in the subdivision, but just short of, um, you know, flowing down the hill and getting into Page Street. But again, it's, it's, it's not the town of Lunenburg's property and it's hard to, you know, force something like that on, on a landlord.
And what you have here is you have, you have residents who've lived in this area for a very long time who know that this issue didn't exist prior to the building of this subdivision. And that, you know, while they can't definitively say that the subdivision itself is the cause of the problem, that somehow in the construction of this subdivision, it created the dynamic where this is now the problem. And it's been going on for 19, 20 years and not getting any better. So the answer is, just so I'm summarizing here, are that, um, the solutions here are that if the condo association does maintenance on their retention, retention basis, that that may minimize some of this issue. It's not gonna solve it. Um, and that the other solution would be to pipe the water basically to the back of, um, either Ms. Whalen or Mr. Allison's property, to then go into, let's say, Mr. Allison, go into his existing pond. But the downside of that is that now you have this water that's gonna go downhill to affect the, the residents who live on Page Street and those who live around the pond. Which, by the way, I'm connected into that whole water system, even though I live down the hill on Mass Ave, because it's all interconnected all the way through. Okay. I think I understand, do you have any questions?
I do, um, thank you, Brian. And, uh, first I want to talk about the, what you just discussed, the identifying the source, so that would be some kind of hydrological study?
It's, I mean, to be honest, I, I, it should be, yes, a hydrologic study. We need some survey out there, topography to see what's going on. I mean, speaking with the residents, people who live out there, you know, I, the, the best way to gain information is to talk to people who see it and live around it. So, you know, a public meeting, something like this where you pull up an aerial, if I have a, a big plan that shows the whole area, I can download USGS topography, you know, I can get topo offline, that's, that's pretty accurate, but it's not on-the-ground hard survey, just to see the common trends of the topography out there, you know? We could probably download a historical too, to see what it was like, you know, before it was built, and then look at it now to see what the diff, difference is. If, um, if the subdivision plans were available when this was permitted, you know, I've never seen those, I, I could get my hands on those and, and, you know, do my best to analyze, at least the pre-versus-post where things flowed then and where things go now, I'd be able to see the ponds and how the other structures were set up, um, we could check the volumes, you know? So I think kind of an information gathering first from maybe the residents there to really give me a better understanding of what they're seeing, because we've, I've tried, I've driven out there in rainstorms multiple times and I haven't really seen the effects of, of anything coming off the property except for what was in the roadway directly running off. But, you know, I think that would be a great place to start. And then from there, like I said, the, the, the best thing is to fix it at the source, if you can fix it at the source. And then, you know, adding small things here or there, I think aren't really going to do anything for the project here, it might help in the, the really small storm events to hold it. But they're going to be on the shoulder basins, these shoulder swales that are pretty much right now, they see water, but they're all overgrown. If we clear them out, riprap them, they're going to be kind of roadside, fully full of water swales that, you know, the abutters probably don't want on a scenic road and, um, you know, potentially could be a, a danger to, to cars and vehicles driving on the road.
So the, uh, what would be the outcome of all that if, because I assume we'd need the same type of cooperation if we don't have any property?
It seems like the end goal is, the only way to really fix this problem is to capture it, collect it, hold it back and let it out slowly, but you need land to do that. So, the end game, no matter how we look at it, without that, I think it's going to be just a Band-Aid, unless there's something in the subdivision, unless cleaning out these ponds, cleaning out the existing stormwater infrastructure in that subdivision, you know, it may make a big difference for the majority of storms, just when we get the really big storms, the hundred-year storms that are happening more frequently now, you know, on a yearly basis practically, you know, then there's really nothing you can do for it, but it might really help in the majority of the storms.
So, Cortland Circle, that subdivision added another detention pond, if we worked with, if that was even a possibility, that may improve?
Or, or volume, I mean, it, it could be a case where the existing ponds, they could be grubbed out or expanded or, you know, they may have three-to-one slopes, maybe you do something, they give them two-to-one slopes and just gain a little more volume and every pond might go a long way.
I believe they did, a couple of years ago, they did dredge those, um. Okay. Okay. Great. Can you also speak, you mentioned like a more extensive solution, that would be costly, like what would that look like?
So, what we were looking at was initially, I was asked to try to design a roadside swell-type approach where you're just excavating swales along the edge of the road. Then it's, it's less impactful, you're not replacing roadway, you're not tearing up the street and having to repave. The other method of gaining storage is, is underground, so adding either like a storm tech infiltration system, which are like plastic chambers that go underground, um, you can install really big pipes, like 48-inch pipes, all the way down the road that collects all the stormwater, but then the end of that pipe is a 12-inch outlet, so it holds back all that water and lets it out slower. But the issue, issue there was after we did all the test pits and we saw how high the groundwater is, it, it kind of cancels that, that, that whole approach. Because now groundwater is so high, there's really nothing you can do to keep the water out of it. So you could spend the money to install all these, these volume-increasing storage chambers underground, but they're going to be full of water and you don't have the volume available. So it diminishes the whole point of, of installing.
So that's not a solution?
It's not a solution, no, no. And they, they have, they have watertight ones you can install so nothing can get in, but with high groundwater, now you have plastic pipe on the ground that's buoyant and it could easily come up through the roadway and it just, it was taken off the table pretty quickly. So. Land, it's like land, if we just had the land available to put a pond to hold this, it would have fixed this, you know, pretty much confident it would have fixed the problem, but we just don't have that.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a clear need on our side to send a, uh, we can discuss it after, but I think we need to discuss sending a communication out to the condo, um, to ask them what their maintenance schedule is of their retention basins and to remind them, um, that these things are, are critical elements of the design to make the whole thing work and that the deterioration of these features will have a negative impact on others. And so while we, while this permit did not specify a schedule, uh, that there still is an expectation that these things work. And, uh, and so I think there will be a need on our end to do a review to see the current condition of those retention basins, those retention ponds, and see if, how close they are to what the plan was, um, and to ensure that the association is, you know, prepared for that. Now, realistically, condo associations, how they do their money, is, uh, it's annual, um, they don't typically, you know, they don't have money sitting around to spend a lot, uh, they do usually have small reserve funds, but it's usually for planned things that are coming up, and something like this, you know, is a special assessment, uh, which could lead to a special assessment, which then decreases the satisfaction of all the residents who live in town, which all of us are politicians up here. So it makes this even more complicated, except that, you know, the other approach, of course, is to use lawyers, which none of us want to do. Would that be a recommended course of action for us to take? Do you, would you advise?
I agree. I would.
Okay. I want to give the opportunity to the residents, uh, who are affected by this, either those who live in Cortland, uh, or Ms. Whalen or anyone else, to come up and speak. Uh, I would ask Ms. Whalen if she wouldn't mind first, and then, uh, the gentleman next to Ms. Whalen. And certainly I see Mr. Allison, uh, so, uh, the third person will be Mr. Melvin.
Okay. Susan Whalen, 377 Flat Hill Road. I'm wondering if you're aware, at the highest elevation within Cortland Circle, there's a, a pond?
Not a stormwater pond?
No, just a natural pond. Okay. When the design was, um, when the stormwater design was, was done back in 1994, um, there were culverts put in under the road approximately around 42 Cortland Circle that was supposed to take that water, the flow of that water from that pond was supposed to go in that, in that direction, which was west, through those culverts and eventually find its way to Fulcom Swamp. This is all described in the stormwater report. That is not happening, the, the, the water does not flow in that direction. The culverts are filled with leaves, sometimes I walk by, there's boards up against them to prevent the flow of the water in that westerly direction, and it doesn't seem as though, um, and there's all leaves and garden debris between those culverts and the pond preventing any sort of flow. Also, so that leads one to believe that that's, that the overflow, when it rains and that pond overflows, that the water is going to go east, because it's not going west. It was taken into account with the original design plan that the water was going to overflow and go somewhere, so it comes east. East of that pond, uh, in the plans, there is, um, a wetlands replication area that was designed, so that the land was lowered, a wetland replication area was put in to make up for other wetlands that were, um, filled in apparently when the road was built. So that is between the pond and, um, the properties of, hmm, um. Trying to remember the numbers, is it, is it two, 242 and 246, I believe, Flat Hill Road? This is where the water is flowing through in quite large amounts onto the road. So that's one source, it's not a, it's not a one-problem situation, it's multifactorial here. But that is one, one problem where the source of the water is not going in the direction that it was intended. And I'm glad to see that we are finally talking about source of water. And that's what I wanted to contribute to the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Whalen. Sir? And after this, we will call for Mr. Melvin, who's on Zoom.
Hi, Eric Holt, 29 Cortland Circle, and I live right in the corner. We've lived there since 2005.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually moved over from Fitchford, Massachusetts. And, uh, I think it was 2006 to 2007, we noticed there was a lake in between the road and our house, and we were concerned as far as the water getting into the basement, but we'd actually, there's some nice ducks floating around out there. But anyways, the water used to flow across our lawn and kind of stayed there as a little bit of a lake, and then from there it kind of drained off as far as in the spring. And then they came along, as far as with the homeowners association, they put some drains in next to the road, supposedly catch that water to go ahead and flow it into that retention pond. And that really never worked because the water never actually reached those particular drains. And I'm going to say probably 2009, they put in a Title V compliant septic system on the houses located just north of us, and all of a sudden the water flow completely changed and rather than coming across our lawn, went out to the road and then came down Flat Hill Road. And as far as the retain, as far as the septic system, we have a homeowners association septic system that takes all of the septic and brings it down to wastewater treatment plant and is treated there. So there's no way for wastewater, or stormwater to get involved and get to, into our, our septic system. And then retention pond, I want to say back in 19, excuse me, 2006 to 2007, they actually increased the size of that pond by about 50% to actually receive all this water that's going off, off, so fills with our property. And, uh, I've been watching that retention pond for years, and I've never seen that, that pond go even close to being full. You took, take a look as far as the way the water comes in, as far as the way the water can actually come out, there's at least a six to eight-foot, uh, uh, pipe that's above that area, in case there is an overflow that actually put, put that water out there onto Flat Hill Road. Now, my suggestion is point of collection is going to be just north of our house, that's where that water comes down. The town put brick brack in on the side of the road between our, our house and the, and the road to supposedly collect that water and slow it down. That's just completely filled with sand over the years. And my suggestion to you is to go ahead and take that water that's coming down Flat Hill Road and put it into retention pond that's right across my house. That, that pond has got plenty of room to go ahead and accept that water. Okay? Any questions?
I don't, I mean, I think some of this though is, you know, I think you know the town doesn't improve private property.
Well, I'm going to make the suggestion, this is a win-win situation actually, is that if the town wants to put the water into that retention pond and then from there turn around, come, come out and comply with cleaning that pond out periodically, I think the homeowners association will actually go along with that.
Say that last part one more time.
Okay. A win-win situation, right, is to go ahead and take, pour all of this water into that retention pond. And then the town of Lunenburg agree that they would pick up as far as the cleaning out process, as far as cleaning out that retention pond, whenever it's supposed to be due, every five years or every 10 years.
Okay. I follow, um, I. Yeah, that would definitely be a cost-sharing thing, but more than, is there, are you part of the condo, of the homeowners association board?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, all right, by chance?
Past trustee, by the way.
Excellent, I think that what we probably would be, would be beneficial is if you wouldn't mind providing, um, the points of contact yourself and the other trustees to the town manager's office?
The town of, excuse me, the association right there, 50 Cortland Circle, by mail, and then from there just contact that way.
Okay, and you have a three-member board or five?
Three.
Okay. I think that it, I, for sure, it sounds as if any solution that's worked out is certainly going to engage the association, um, to kind of be a partner in the solution here.
Now, because if you can take 90% of that water that comes off the properties north of us and divert that into the retention pond, you've solved the problem.
Good.
Okay? Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Melvin, on Zoom.
Hey, uh, I've got a couple of questions about the survey that was done for the soils out in the Flat Hill area.
Mr. Melvin, if you wouldn't mind just stating your, your name and, well, I have, we have your name, but your address as well.
Sure, David Melvin, I'm at 655 Page Street. And, uh, we fight the water as it comes off of Flat Hill, and, uh, you know, we're, we're at the bottom side of gravity, so we see a lot of it, but I've spent a few years looking at what the issues seem to be on our end, and a lot of it seems like, uh, we're basically living on a sponge. We've got soil saturation, which may explain why you're seeing groundwater at surface levels right now. Uh, a number of other factors contribute to it, we've got a lot of deciduous trees out here that lose their foliage as that decomposes and turns into an organic material on top and makes it a, a less porous material, the groundwater still, or the ground surface still becomes very saturated, and we see this saturation last for a few months even after the winter thaw. So, what we're fighting right now is a soil saturation issue that starts on the Flat Hill area, starts working its way down to Page Street, and when the ground is frozen, it's got nowhere to flow other than over the top, which makes life a little more difficult. Once it thaws, the soil becomes super saturated, it still has nowhere to go, so that static pressure works its way all the way through down Flat Hill. We've seen at the neighbors even midway down the hill that it's still pushing that water down, and it's got nowhere to relieve that pressure. And out here, most of the houses are very shallow ledge houses, so we don't have a lot of topsoil for that groundwater to run off from. Uh, the average well out here is anywhere between 265 feet to over 700 feet, which tells you that there's a pretty good shale or ledge, uh, structure that prevents groundwater from getting to those ground tables or those water tables. Now, this year, we've added few hundred, uh, 400 fewer trees in the orchard, which means fewer trees pulling any of that surface water off the top, uh, and there are no natural ditches that do any effective water retention through Flat Hill, so they kind of flow downhill to about the edge of the, uh, Allison's property field, and then they work their way back behind our properties, I think there's a pond back there, and once the runoff overflows in that pond, it grows over the surface and it turns all of our backyards into mud pits. So, what, my question is, I saw some of these plans that had, uh, at least some piping that would take it from Flat Hill to the Page Street overflow, uh, that takes the groundwater down to the lower, uh, brook or pond that's at the bottom of Page Street. What makes you think that it would be ineffective? Because a lot of the, a lot of the solutions that I'm seeing here, even if we tried to push water into a pond, it's a lot like cutting a hole in the middle of a sponge. If it's saturated, you're not going to grow any additional level of water, it's still going to be a saturated sponge, you've got to find a way to relieve that pressure. Probably a lot of information, but if you have questions, have it.
No, that was, that was good, um, Mr. Melvin, that was good information. Brian?
So, um, I, I would, I would agree with you that the, a solution is to pipe it, and that's what we had originally proposed here, collect it, catch basins and pipe it down to Page Street, uh, but the Page Street outlet isn't all the way down at Beaver Brook, it's halfway down Page Street and it discharges onto, uh, private property, uh, which the drainage swale then runs underneath people's driveways through culverts, so you're taking water from a different area that never used to go there and you're just introducing more water down. introducing more water down and causing a problem for somebody else. So, you know, that's the part where I, you know, had the conversation with Rob Oliver. I couldn't stamp this, knowingly stamp it full while long. I'm just taking the problem from the top of the hill, and I'm moving it down the hill to somebody else's yard, you know, without being.
Can we carry that water to a natural water source like a brook or a pond?
Well, it does, but the existing drainage infrastructure in Page Street doesn't discharge solely down at the, at Beaver Brook at the bottom of the hill.
Sure, sure. But could that be part of this proposal is to extend it to a natural water flow?
You, you, we could, we certainly could, but we'd have to detain it and hold it back. You need the, it doesn't pass stormwater regulations in the state of Massachusetts to just collect runoff and dump it somewhere else, to increase the peak flows and the peak volume somewhere else. So we'd have to mitigate it, hold it back, and release it slowly.
Mr. Marsh, should I have a question for you? In the concept plan, you show, you know, the grades along Flat Hill Road and whatnot. And I guess one of the things I'm curious about as I've listened to the discussion, has a recent survey been completed of the entire, have they resurveyed the subdivision in the area of properties where the water's coming from and done, you know, just to, you know, essentially do a drainage study on that to see if it's changed from where the plans, the historic plans were? Because it sounds like a lot of changes have been made, not everything has been captured in the records. So I was just wondering if a new survey has been done and a new drainage study done of the whole area?
As far as I know, it has not. We were authorized to do a survey of the right of way. So we're just in the roadway from the top of the hill, right by Cortland Circle, down to Page Street, down to the intersection with Page Street, and then Page Street down to Beaver Brook.
So, so one of the things Ms. Wellen brought up, a interesting point, because you can look at the aerial maps, and there is a pond right in the center of the property. And it's interesting that if what she says is correct, that it was originally intended, a lot of the water was going to get piped down to the swamp, which is west of the property. I think a drainage study to see if that would be feasible, because swamps are nature's sponges, and they're meant to take a lot of that water. If there's a way we could divert the water there in economical fashion, that would be something that would be worth examining.
I'd agree. And I think doing that survey and study and talking to the others is an important first step, because again, it's at the source, start at the source. Because if the system was designed to function one way, and we see it all the time in projects that we come back to 20 years later, pipes are blocked. We had another project that had a big culvert that historically, the wetland upstream had been flooding for years and years and years. There was a kayak stuck in the culvert. So, things like that, if they're not maintained, if they're not cleaned, they're not going to function like they were supposed to.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Melvin, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I think we're all looking for some kind of a solution. I know that we can't pipe directly into a brook because of Massachusetts regulations, but there's got to be a better solution, because right now, we're just pumping it across a bunch of neighborhood properties, and that water flow is making it to the brooks either way. So I'm hoping that we can find something that works for us all. Right now, we individually fight it, and it starts pushing the problem off to another neighbor and another neighbor. And I think we're at the point where we're all trying to find something that works.
Yeah. Mr. Fring?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, everybody, for all the input. I, I'm understanding this thing in pieces and from pictures and photos and maps, but we did receive an email from Mr. Menard asking if anybody would be interested in going out there. And I'm interested in just like, I know when I was on conservation, I was on a conservation commission years ago, like almost 30 years ago, in Southbridge, and I always benefited from the site visits, seeing what was going on on the ground. Can we organize some kind of a, maybe with residents, that could show us sort of like from suspected source through the basins, through Cortland Circle, down to Page Street? What is going on?
Chris Menard, 672 Page Street, the lowest part of this problem, I think, at this point. Not quite the lowest, maybe. So I did send you an email, a very, you know, 10-minute drawing of how the water starts to flow from probably Ms. Wellen's backyard into a pond across the street from me, and then down Flat Hill through the, either the road itself or the underground pipes onto my, you know, my property and my neighbor's property. Then it goes down into a spring-fed pond in my backyard, actually my neighbor's pond. And then it kind of cuts east under a driveway. And I showed you a video of the, the, an event that was occurring, and it was almost overflowing across their driveway at that point. It actually then goes through the, continues east through another huge culvert with a berm that is, there's like a horse path in part of the Snow Riders drive over. And then it eventually makes it into Beaver Brook. I'll also say that like, at one point, the Beaver Brook on the south side was more like Beaver Swamp. And then a lot of trees were taken out of that. And I think that that also starts to bring into this whole, like, system, a lot of other problems. Occasionally, the beavers of the Beaver Brook actually dam up the, the area, so we get flooding across Page Street. There's a few times where Page Street's actually been shut down right at the Shirley line. So, and like I said in the, in the email, and, you know, you're all welcome over, can have a coffee and a walk around the neighborhood, and I can show you firsthand how it is. After a rain event, it's obviously a good one. And then, you know, after a snow event, you know, hopefully you don't get any more snow, but you really see this thing in action. And, you know, Dave's my neighbor, he's come over and helped me a few times. He's seen how swamped, you know, my, my land is as well. The, the water table's like six inches from the top at this point. So it's kind of a, again, I think that's super saturation event as well. But I wouldn't wonder if you couldn't bring it all the way down Page Street, almost to the Shirley? Because that's where it's going, that's where it ends up anyways.
We initially, when we started this, we put out a couple of concepts, and that was, the solution was to pipe it down to Page, then pipe it down to Page just for the first culvert, because the catch bases do discharge halfway down Page. And then there's, we showed another culvert for an alternative, be it extend it all the way down to Beaver Brook. So again, it's, it's just piping materials. It's easy to do, but legally doing it and getting approval to do it's another animal, because you're supposed to hold it back and detain it and let it out slowly. We just don't have available area to provide those detention facilities.
Just as a reminder, when you speak, you have to be a little closer to the mic. And Mr. Menard, how long have you been a resident in Lunenburg?
We moved in in 2004.
Okay. So this problem's been going on the whole time?
Um, the problem is, it used to flow a little better, I think. We've absolutely noticed, you know, we walk Flat Hill a lot. It's a nice walking from our house. We did notice that those detention basins used to be more full, because we used to go there because of the peepers. You could hear the peepers in there, so it was kind of cool. They always seemed to be more full when my children are younger. So I do think that there's a problem at those, that they're not, you know, they have gotten kind of a lot of silt and sand and kind of clogged up. So, you know, will that solve everything? I don't know. But it's a, maybe a good start.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions from anyone else? Any comments? Mr. Bernie? If I can invite you to join us up here.
I don't have any.
You're here for interrogation, not comments.
Friendly interrogation.
Yeah. So we need to work on, we need to kind of give some guidance for next steps here. I think, first of all, my comments are that I think that this is progress, for sure. I think a lot of people have been frustrated for a very long time, and I think we're getting answers to a lot of these things. So you've heard tonight about the hydrologic survey, about the topographical survey, about, or another review of subdivision plans, about asking the condo association for their maintenance schedule. What do you see as our next step? What approach do you recommend that we take?
I mean, I think you've already got your approach. You need money to do these things, obviously. I can provide, Brian, with the subdivision plans. That's not a problem. I mean, a letter to the condo association asking what maintenance has been done and what maintenance is intended to be done is obviously, you know, an easy step. It doesn't cost anything. It becomes a negotiation at that point because there isn't a long-term maintenance requirement in either the conservation approval or the planning board approval. If I'm not mistaken, the catch basins are the only thing required to be maintained through the notice of intent that was issued. You know, clearly hogging out the basins would be an easy thing to do insofar as it's not a very technical job. It's getting someone with a machine in there to pull out however much mud and muck is in there.
Without going too into the legalese, what would be your expectation for how we could, how the town could assist the condo or homeowners association with getting that done? Or would it be to not assist?
I think the regulatory side of it and ensuring that we're providing guidance to avoid regulatory issues. These aren't wetland systems, but they're probably wetlands if you were to go out there and do the hydrology, hydrophytic vegetation, and hydro, hydric soils. It probably hits all three of those, but because of when they were constructed, when they were designed, I think there's an exemption within the Wetlands Protection Act that you can do this work. And if they didn't fall within that exemption, then the town could potentially work through its conservation commission to provide some oversight and guidance that would be at minimal cost and would allow them to move through that process. I guess, and I mean, it's hard to say without a DPW director what sort of resources, physical resources the town could be willing to assist with. You know, that's obviously something that can happen. There is a financial cost to that. And whether it's in the town's interest to do that or not, an improvement on private property, you get into a lot of other, which you've already alluded to. But I think really regulatory and moving through the processes where the town has the most bang for our buck, shall we say. If the condo association comes back and as a group decides to offer more formally the use of those basins for retention infiltration, attenuation of that water, I think there's a much larger technical conversation that has to happen. And I would look in this direction, because I don't even play an engineer on TV. I just know enough to get myself in trouble. And, you know, those basins were designed for a certain flow, certain volume from a certain area. And if you're now taking what potentially could be flow that was intended to go there, we need to be able to justify that what we're doing is going to work, or at least is going to not cause additional harm. You know, and I think that there's probably some structural maintenance that could happen on those basins on the outlets from the drainage system. I mean, they're 20, 25 years old. They're concrete. We live in New England. Those kind of two things don't necessarily always mesh. So there may be replacement or repair that could assist in getting the flow going. The times that I have been out there, I haven't noticed the outflow from those basins that goes towards Flat Hill being particularly fast. There's, there's not a high volume, there isn't a high rate of flow. But it's not unusual to see a lot of standing water in that area. Some of that is the height of groundwater, and some of it is that's the way it's designed. It's attenuating that flow out into that area to be reabsorbed. And, you know, I think the source is the big issue. No one has ever been able to say this is where it comes from. And I think Mrs. Wellen is right, there is a multi-factor source, but we don't have, I think, any of them really pegged as to this is, this is what it is. But I suspect a fair amount of it is groundwater breakout from, from the hill in that area.
Okay. Any thoughts, Todd or Lou, about next steps on this and what direction we should go in based on that feedback?
Well, I like the idea of the condo group exploring the idea of whether that would be offered. And I still, I personally would benefit from actually seeing a lot of this stuff, so I would like to see that somehow set up, if it's formal or informal, it doesn't matter to me. But, so, I just, I'll do a whole, much better job visualizing this whole thing if I actually get out there and see it and put the, put the work boots on and walk in the mud. So.
Todd?
Well, as I mentioned in my question earlier, I think a drainage study of the area has to be completed. So whether that, I mean, that'd probably be an item for special town meeting or something like that to put it on there. But I think over the next few months, we can work to get an estimate together for, you know, how much we need to budget for that. I think that's going to be a key to solving the problem, as well as working hand in glove with the residents in the area that the homeowners association and whatnot. I think everyone's going to have to come together to solve the problem. Everybody recognizes there's a problem, so I think we need more data on where the water's coming from, because I think it's obvious, it may be multiple sources and multiple changes to the site over the last 20-plus years that have contributed to the issue. And it may not, it may be, you know, just multiple things are causing issues. And, you know, from worn-out infrastructure to changes in grades and all sorts of things. So I just think we need a much more comprehensive study of that area to figure out where all that water's coming from. And then, once we figure that out, then we can figure out what to do with it.
All right. And to the town manager, I see a question popping up that I cannot read from here. Comment.
So, one, there was a comment from Lindsay Melvin. Is there a drainage plan for the new housing area on Flat Hill? And is the road, is the water planned to go to Flat Hill or down the backside towards Page Street?
Yeah. I think we're still working through some of that stuff. I don't think we're at the point of a plan, but Mr.
Oh, there, well, she's inquiring about the new housing area. I suspect she means the former orchard at 360 Flat Hill. There were eight A and R lots approved there, which are approval not required, which required an approval. It's a whole nother nuance of Massachusetts law. So those lots are going to be houses, obviously. And a stormwater permit was issued for those eight lots. Each lot will have an individual, I'll call it a drainage system. It is a series of underground detention for the roof leaders from the house, a peystone diaphragm, for lack of a better term, along the side of the driveway, and a rain garden closer to the street. And each lot functions individually so that the created impervious between the house and driveway is, according to the design, to be captured and attenuated on-site to limit the post-construction flows to the equivalent of those from pre-construction. So the short answer is yes.
All right. And to the town manager, let's talk about some money.
I think you had one more hand raised from Mr. Allison.
Mr. Allison.
Hi. Good evening. Yes? Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Excellent. I thank you so much for this meeting tonight and allowing so much public comment at a select board meeting. I'm not sure I've ever heard this much on an item. I think the previous speakers have made most of the points. Just to, just to rehash, this, this started in 96, and then in 2000, they broke ground. And in 2000, that's when the drainage issues started. My, the home that I grew up, my folks bought the place in 1968. We had wood and food and a wood stove downstairs, nice and dry. And now, since, since 2000, we had a foot plus water in our basement, right across the street from the basin. It's, it's just, it's ridiculous that we have brought these issues up to planning and. these issues up to planning and border selectmen and DPW for the last twenty-plus years. And I'm extremely happy to hear people, all the people, most of the people at this meeting talking about looking at the source of the issue. Because everybody before this has been like, eh, it was already there. Love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. I think we are all very committed, as we said it the last time we talked to you and Ms. Whalen, that we will hold on to this until it's fully resolved. And that we know there's a lot of moving parts. So to the town manager about money.
So we do have a capital article in our capital plan for, it was for design, drainage design for this project. I would ask Mr. Marchetti to revisit the proposal and incorporate the aspects that we discussed tonight to give us a revised proposal. And in the meantime, if we can set up a site visit too, and that may shed additional light on.
Yeah, certainly like to have the site visit before I do the proposal.
Okay. So we should do that as soon as possible.
All right. Why don't we just get a little administrative here and look at our calendars and see when we're available on a Saturday for a site visit?
I'm good Saturday.
This Saturday. All right, let's just take a look. I'm assuming Saturdays will work best for most of us, yes?
Yep.
All right. I think, so you, your bill, as we look at the next, like, three weeks, I can do the twenty-sixth, I can't do the second, and I can do the ninth as well. And I think you need to get this information probably by then anyway. So I think twenty-sixth is probably the preferred or the, or the ninth. What areas you're looking like on those dates?
I can do the twenty-sixth and the second, which you can't do. So now we're down to the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I can do the twenty-sixth. You know, if it's more convenient for people, I could also do a morning during the week as well, if necessary.
How's your availability looking this Saturday, Brian?
How early can you go?
As early as you want us to. Eight o'clock.
I can do that.
All right.
My name is Christine Tremaine.
You have to come to the microphone. Does that time as well work for you, Chris? Eight on Saturday? Eight works for you guys? Eight? Okay.
I'm Christine Tremaine. I live at two sixty-eight Flat Hill. Some of the topics you've been talking about, the water where it originates is behind my property. So when you come out to do that walkthrough, you'll be probably easiest to go through my backyard.
Okay.
So just so you know.
Give us your address one more time?
Two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight.
Yep.
Yep. Is that where you're gonna start?
Yeah. Where should we start? Where do you guys want to meet at? What do you recommend, those of you who live there? Where do you recommend? All right, Cortland's. All right, give me that.
He's even on the map. Saint Germain is on the map.
All right. And what's the address there for that? Do we have it? Forty-nine. All right. So we're, we'll plan to meet at forty-nine Cortland on Saturday morning this Saturday at eight AM. And we'll conduct a site walk, and I'm sure it's going to be a little lengthy. So we'll, we'll come with our mud shoes on, as Lou said.
Forty-nine Cortland?
Forty-nine Cortland. Okay. Thank you all for your input tonight. I think this was very productive and very helpful. So again, thank you for your input tonight as well. Thank you. All right. So we are, and thank you, Brian. So we are at eight fifteen for a presentation of the draft DHCD guidelines for the new multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities per chapter three fifty-eight of the Acts of two thousand and twenty and the community information form.
I'm glad after that rocky start, you guys could get back on your normal schedule.
If you want to give us a minute just to give me the opportunity to step out. Adam, this is probably the closest to a planning board I've, I've been in a while.
I'm sure you miss it.
I do. I do. I certainly miss working with Marjorie. I think you know that.
That I do.
All right, Mr. Bernie?
All right. So do you have the presentation? Oh, I didn't bring my printout. Okay. Well, anyway, I'll introduce this. Adam Bernie, Land Use Director. So back in December of two thousand twenty-one, the legislature amended section three A of chapter forty A. And they created a new standard for MBTA communities. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight and how it impacts the town of Lunenburg as an MBTA community. I can see the surprise in your face because I was surprised to find out we were an MBTA community too.
And as a reminder, this is not because we have the tracks that go through it, because we live next to a town that has the station.
My presentation will get to that. So on the screen is the, an excerpt from chapter forty A, section three A. And essentially what it says is every MBTA community will be required to have a zone, a zoning district of substantial size in which by right residential development of fifteen units per acre is permitted. So not special permit, not, you know, by right. And they were nice enough to say of reasonable size and not define that. So the reason we're an MBTA community is we're considered MBTA adjacent. So next slide, please.
Just takes a second.
Okay, sorry. MBTA communities is someone who has subway station, commuter rail station, or is next to someone who has one of those. And so we fall into the very final category. And normally, they dictate being a half mile or so from the station. I don't think any of our borders are within a half mile of a station. We just happen to be adjacent to multiple communities that have facilities. So we're the, like, the lowest tier of MBTA community, so we just kind of get hoovered in. Next slide, please. What's required? So the Department of Housing and Community Development, in conjunction with the MBTA, developed a series of guidelines, which were in your Google Drive. They look sort of like this. And they outline how communities are required to comply. They've determined that reasonable size equals fifty acres. So the minimum that any community will be required to have laws that permit development by right will be seven hundred and fifty housing units. So fifteen units per acre by fifty acres is seven hundred and fifty housing units. And then it only goes up from there. Luckily, we don't have enough houses that we'd be required to provide the ability for someone to create more than that. In addition, the, it must be as right. We can require site plan approval, but we can't require a special permit or anything of that nature. We can do it as an overlay district. We can do it as a created standard hard zoning district, if you will. It does not need to be fifty contiguous acres. It can be a series of smaller districts, but the minimum, we need to have at least twenty-five acres in one district. And it needs to be reasonably able to be developed per the determination of the Department of Housing and Community Development. So if we went and said, we're going to do this on the Table Rock Conservation Area, they would say, yeah, you're not compliant because that is Article ninety-seven land and would require an act of legislature to take out of conservation purposes. So, you know, I already kind of asked these questions and they were not too nice to me about it.
Do you care if we ask questions?
No, I don't.
And if anyone has any, just feel free to just jump in. The first question, do any of our existing districts, all I can think about is Whalen.
The, um, yeah, I mean, Whalen is like four units an acre. The closest thing we would have to this would be the Emerald Place development, and that's eight units per acre. So we're talking about twice the density of Emerald Place for, I think, three times the land area.
Allowed by right.
By right.
Fifty acres, twice the density of Emerald Place. So the next obvious question is, what's the penalty for not complying?
Ooh, next slide, please. Uh, oh, so I'll go through the timeline real quick. So you all need to get a presentation about this, which we're doing tonight. Then we need to fill out this fancy form that they sent us by fillable PDF that essentially says, can you do it? Are you gonna do it? Do you want some technical assistance? And that's due by May first, or May, May second of this year, because May first is a Sunday. Then we would need to submit a district that says we comply or we don't comply, or a plan for coming to compliance. And then we would work through, create an action plan, carry out the action plan, and by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, we'd have to submit our final district as approved. Next slide, please.
Was one skipped over?
Did we miss?
Oh. Oh, I thought there was, well, maybe it's on the... I really thought that I included the why, what happens if we don't. But, well, I can tell you, because if we don't comply, they keep us from being able to apply for things like Mass Works and Housing Choice money and one other grant program.
Do we currently get any money from those programs?
No.
So not complying, not complying means we won't get grant money that we already don't get?
Well, we wouldn't even be legally allowed to apply.
Okay. So we won't, we'll be restricted from, so what's the, this sounds great to me.
I mean, in, in theory, Mass Works has a lot of programs that, as we move forward, we would want to have access to. Mostly, public work economic development, road programs. I don't think Complete Streets falls under Mass, Mass Works yet, but, you know, there's just, they keep pulling more stuff into Mass Works, and it's usually public works, DPW-type projects. And it's interesting because I asked that question. We, the Regional Planning Agency had a question and answer with the secretary and the team from DHCD. And I said, well, the cost of seven hundred and fifty potential housing units to a town like ours is astronomical to the school system and other things. And we're not getting any of this money already, so what's our incentive? And he said, well, I'm just going to remind you that the law says shall. You shall do it. And I said, okay, but, you know, I mean, is there really a penalty? And it really comes down, I think, to you folks to sort of make a decision. And, you know, I think even if the select board doesn't support this, it would, I think, make intelligent sense to take the technical assistance to work through the program. And ultimately, none of this happens without town meeting. And so we're creating a zoning bylaw, and that requires a three-fourths majority at town meeting. And, I mean, I, my, my ears already hurt and my back already hurts from being stabbed and yelled at, at town meeting about trying to propose this about here, hey, we're gonna do this.
I'm sure I'm like one of the biggest things.
But, and, and, and that's not, I, I just know that this isn't something that members of this community en masse are going to be supportive of. I will note, and this was said, I would say probably close to a hundred times in the various things I've seen about this, there is an obligation to produce these units just to set the table so that someone else could produce them.
So in theory, we could say to, like, we could do an overlay of where the existing Emerald Place is, for example. And that's about, what, thirty acres or so at least?
Theoretically.
This is where we could develop, this is an MBTA district, although we already have buildings there.
Correct.
We could designate that. So if by right they wanted to upset all their owners, then they can go ahead and do it.
And I might even take it one step further because, well, Emerald Place is, is a single owner. So that actually might be dangerous because it might be worth it to them to throw everyone out and build twice as much housing there. But if we were to do it strategically and look at places where there are a lot of smaller parcels that would require significant compiling from a financial perspective to create a parcel big enough to invest, to, to find a reasonable way to invest money to create housing that would then pay off, you know, if we took an over, an MBTA overlay over a significant portion of the Whalen District. And I, this is very well thought out because I know how sensitive folks down there are about the amount of development they have received. But their parcels tend to be between a tenth of an acre and a half of an acre on average. And so if you get fifty acres and there's five hundred people who own houses in there, it's a much more significant effort to create a parcel where you're building fifteen units an acre on a regular basis in a way that is substantial enough to make the financial outlay worth it.
But if one person wanted to build a home that could have fifteen people on an acre, we couldn't.
We couldn't, but you can require site plan approval. You can set a series of standards for how that looks. You could potentially, you can't age restrict it, and it needs to be suitable for families. So you could potentially set standards for what's inclusive in that development. Maybe there is a requirement of bedroom count amongst units that is metered out across the development. Maybe twenty-five percent need to be one-bedroom, seventy percent need to be two-bedroom, and, you know, the remainder needs to be three-bedroom. And so if someone's like, I just want to build fifteen units on one acre, how do they fit that in to make it work? And then how do they actually fit parking and, and all of those pertinent facilities that go with it? So I just...
Is there an expectation, like, that density requires water and sewer? Is there an expectation to provide that?
And they were cagey about that because, you know, Townsend is an MBTA community. They abut Fitchburg.
Oh, yeah.
So Townsend said, well, are you going to give us some guidance on how we work with Title V? And they're like, yeah, yeah, well, we'll, we'll take it under advisement. You know, Harvard is an MBTA community. I can't imagine this presentation in the town of Harvard.
No.
So...
They pushed it off to Devon's anyway.
But there, there's just so much. It's, it's taking a square peg and trying to fit it in every shaped hole. Because if you're Newton, this is like, okay, yeah, sure. You know, if you're Arlington, we can figure this out. Worcester, Lemonster, you know, but Townsend, you know, there, it doesn't seem that there's been a thoughtful, it's kind of a scattershot approach. And it seemed to me that the secretary was pushing it off back on the legislature, like, oh, this isn't the governor, this is the legislature. Ultimately, the governor signed it, and we're all sort of stuck with it now. So short of it being repealed, or everyone just saying, yeah, good luck, I don't know what, what comes of this.
And it was the governor's proposal a few years back.
Yes.
The Housing Choice Initiative that his bill that he filed with the legislature was to reduce the vote at town meeting.
Voting quantum, yeah.
The quorum vote at town meeting.
For housing zoning to fifty percent.
So instead, I think this was an alternative route to get to that end goal.
We won't give them the option to vote less. We'll just force them to do it. And, you know, I think there's a noble effort and thought behind it. And, and, you know, the, I think there's a noble effort and thought behind it. They're, they're saying we're going to create 50,000 additional housing units through this, potentially. Great, we're, I mean, there's a housing shortage, I don't think anybody is unaware of that. I think this seems ham-fisted to create housing. And it, it seems like a great way to create a lot of resentment in more suburban and rural communities for folks who, you know, wanna live in these settings, or need to live in these settings. And I, I think it, it, it creates a potential dangerous precedent.
Any questions, comments?
I, I, I'm, 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 I mean, I've listened to everything. Everything that was said after this point.
I had the same, the same look after, but the first time I read this.
But Mr. Jeffrey's kinda had me at, well, what are they gonna do to us?
Sure.
The carrot and the stick approach.
Yeah.
For sure. We'd have to do a full review of the different grant opportunities, I think, and...
And, and I think, right now, we should proceed with compliance.
I...
And, and work both, both thoughts parallel. Because I would hate to, you know, put up the double freedom rockets and say, we're not gonna do this, and find out in six months that, wow, there's something we really need to do. And, you know, all of this technical assistance is free. The district local technical assistance program is being ramped up to, uh, not solely focus on this, but to heavily favor applications of this type. That would be working with the Regional Planning Agency, plus DHCD is offering, uh, I, I was unclear if it was cash or direct assistance, uh, but, so, I, I mean, my proposal is to, to complete the, the form, have the town manager sign it, that we're gonna, we're gonna do our, our good, our good deeds, and we're gonna start looking at this and come up with our thoughts, and, um, and start moving that forward. And then meanwhile, we should look and see what, what the real impact is.
So, like, just theoretically, it, I, I don't, I don't dispute doing that. But what, like, let's say you go through this whole exercise, and you start doing studies and stuff, and it's just completely infeasible to do it. I mean, is that an acceptable answer at some point?
I, I, I didn't get the impression that it was.
Okay.
I got the impression that it was either you end up with this by the date that we tell you, or you end up not having access to these other funding streams.
And of course, they could theoretically change the stuff you don't have access to in the future, maybe.
Yes, that's, that's always their pleasure to, to change that.
Stick, you know?
Yeah.
Or they can just change the rules, Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah, this, um, is a wonderful law. Just kinda shaking my head at, at these, these sort of mandates, but, um, you know, I, I agree with the, the proposed to, you know, provide the, uh, form, complete the form and submit it on, in May, and, you know, do the minimum compliance for now until we dig into this and, and fully grasp what the impacts could be, or, yeah. I mean, it's gonna be over a two-year period before it's, you know, we have to develop a plan or anything like that, so, so we have time to digest it and...
Yeah, that, that's sort of my, my feeling, and I would... It's easy to say, oh, well, you don't have to produce these, but you give, you open that door for someone. And I, I think probably all of you folks, more so than me, have lived what housing has looked like here over the last decade, and, and how people have clamored to get out in this direction and, and into this town specifically. And just opening the door to say, yeah, just build it even more dense, it seems like a, an, a recipe for, for even faster development.
So, I mean, my, my opinion on this, which I think you can deduce from my questions, is, uh, obviously, I'm not in favor of this at all. You know, I mean, I think it's kind of, given that I work in the property world, and mostly commercial now, not as much residential, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if I agree with this approach. Because, you know, from my own perspective, what I see, and this is not a very popular position that any politician's ever gonna take on the state level, but what I, what I understand to be true is that part of the problem that we have is that a lot of people, myself included, who have a little bit more money than the average person, have extra homes. And then we rent them out to make money. And if we, if there was a cap on how much extra property people could have beyond what they live in, that, that would likely resolve most of this. But no one's gonna take that unfavorable position of saying, why do you own 18 rental units? You could, you could only have three. If we did that, that would likely resolve all of this, right? But no, no politician will take that position on the state level. And so now we're stuck with stuff like this, where all of us get to make our money on the side, no one's restricting us. But the side effect is you have a community like Lunenburg where the buy-in is in the hundred, 300, at least something thousand dollars right now to buy into this community. And then you have the state passing these ordinances or laws, you shall do, that then says, well, you need to create one 50-acre district that can have 750 units in it. And 750 units, two people, I mean, you, we're gonna increase the population of our town by this one law if we comply with it, you know?
Yeah, by two, 3,000 people.
And then the impact on the school system, the impact on our roads, impact on police services, are not gonna make up for that, you know? It seems as if we should be taking, sometimes in this role, you gotta take the unfavorable roles that you know are the right thing to do. And it seems like the right thing to do is to start really looking at caps on property ownership to help make housing more affordable, so that way we're not all eating the bag for a handful of people who are extraordinarily wealthy. So, that's my two cents. Not that we're gonna solve any of that today, and I'm sure people at home are probably hearing this, like, I can't believe he said that. You know, but realistically, let's just be honest, like, it's, it's true. It's hard to say that that's not problematic. But, all right, I think it sounds as though the approach that we're gonna be going on is, is, to some clear, that none of us seem to be in favor of this, but that your recommended approach is that we look into the impact of how much money we may be missing out on, um, going back historically and then looking at what's coming up, and simultaneously go through the process of...
Yeah, I mean, right now, for, for May 2nd, the completion of that form is, it, it's a very little effort, and it just keeps us moving forward in the good graces, and lets us live to fight another day.
I'm not a betting man, Mr. Bernie, but I would have bet my pay for a whole year that the town of Lunenburg is never gonna vote 75% to pass this.
I, I got about the reaction I expected here tonight, so I, I, I'm, I, I'm not gonna disagree with you.
All right. As always, thank you, Mr. Bernie.
You're very welcome.
I would also add, I, I would like to have our delegation in again to to talk about who voted for this, so.
Because 2020, that means all of them were there, right?
Yeah, and it was very much under the radar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one, one thing you can say from the comments of the delegation, every time they're in, they pay lip service to more affordable housing.
I know.
And so when something like this comes up, they vote for it because they campaign on more affordable housing. I, I, it tends to be a very, uh, as you said, a ham-fisted way to do it. You know, I think, one of these things, i- if we look at zoning a, a district, I think what a lot of towns will end up doing is creating districts that are so expensive to develop, there, there's, they meet the zoning requirements, but they're so expensive to develop, it won't allow developers to come in and develop those districts.
Well, and I think that also it's important to note, this doesn't require any affordable housing. It's just the creation of housing.
Right.
So these could be, not that it's easy to make 15 an acre, but it could be 2,000 square foot
Sure.
townhouses, or garden condo, or whatever, that people are paying, you know, 5, 600,000 for here in town. I mean, I know that, uh, when I first started working here and, and looking at the real estate data, the, the properties at Stone Farm were the most expensive properties in town on average. And they were not by far the largest, they had no land with them, but people were willing to pay for them, because that's what they wanted. So i- i- it, it doesn't even accomplish the goal that the, the delegation may say that they're trying to get to. We do have inclusionary housing, so there would be a requirement for affordable through our bylaws, but, um, i- i- it's not a, it, that's, that's good on us, not on, on the, the development of these regulations or, or the, the law itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Adam, and while you're here...
I was gonna say, do you wanna go over the articles while I'm standing here?
Yes, please.
All right, so let's go ahead and jump down to our, uh, old business, uh, just to discuss some of the, um, the planning board articles that have been added.
Okay, so you can't ask me any detailed questions, 'cause I don't have the articles with me, but I know what they're about.
Okay. Well...
Uh, the first one is 250, 4.13?
Sounds right.
Uh, it's non-medical marijuana. I, I always get the, the point after that one wrong, I don't know if it's, I think, I don't know if it's 1.3 or 1.5.
4.15.
Okay, so...
Which article is this?
T.
T.
There is a clause in this bylaw that relates to the filing of the special permit for, I'm just gonna call it adult use, or non-medical, uh, non-medical cannabis, uh, locations. That requires, uh, a court, the intent was to require the provision of a provisional license as part of the special permit filing. The folks from Uma Flowers and their well-versed attorney provided the planning board with an opinion that the language did not require the, 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 them to produce a provisional license. Uh, the planning board discussed it with them, and they said, you know what, you're about to open a location. We'll accept that you have a license from the Cannabis Control Commission, and we know that you're, um, you're permissible people, because they've given you this other location, and we can accept that at this point, because we understand you wanna try and move ahead. Uh, and they asked me to discuss with council whether the assertion of their attorney was correct or not. Counsel was unwilling to concede that that language, uh, didn't have that requirement, but he said that he could write new language that was more explicit. So this, this is a, an alteration to that section of the bylaw to include counsel's recommended language to further meet the intent that the board had at the creation of this.
Okay.
So the board felt that they wanted to move forward with that, even though counsel was unwilling to concede, just to, uh, bolster any, any claims that they had in the future.
Okay.
The other two articles are tied together.
On our calendar, this is U and V.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to infer that U is the bylaw, the, the long, lengthy
Yeah.
uh, Water Supply Protection District bylaw.
Uh, sorry, V is...
V is, okay. Well, I'm gonna ask you to flip those when we get to the real, the real lettering. Because what this is, and, and you saw, uh, an allusion to this in the fall, the Water District in 2020 upped their withdrawal permit. And in doing so, they had to redraw their Water Supply Protection Districts, the Zone 1, 2, and 3. And when they did, the map changed to include what looks like a goose sitting on a potato uh, along Kilburn Street off of Lancaster Ave, uh, in the Zone 2 for the, uh, the Zone 2 for the, the Lancaster Wells. The planning board was more than willing in the fall to alter the bylaw, to change the citation to include this map. And U is an alteration to the zoning map to also include these new Water Supply Protection Districts, because we have them listed as overlays on our zoning map. About a week before the final submission to town meeting, I got an email from the Water District Superintendent that said, oh, yeah, I forgot to give you this. It's the changes DEP wants you to make to the Water Supply Protection District that will make them meet the DEP requirements for, uh, the current DEP requirements. And what it was, was a list of, of items they reviewed that they felt didn't comply with their current CMR. The planning board said, we're not willing to make these changes now, let's pull the map, and we'll do them together in the spring. So throughout the bylaw, there's probably less than five alterations. And these are really just taking our bylaw and bringing it up to contemporary standards with DEP's, uh, drinking water protection standards. It's the inclusion of not storing septage and sludge in the Zone 2. The alteration of release of, uh, I think it's 250 gallons of wastewater in a month instead of in a single instance, 'cause I guess theoretically a single instance could be every day. And it's, it's striking a few things here, uh, reducing a, um, coverage requirement from 20% to 15%. Nothing that is going to have any demonstrable effect on, uh, anything that's currently developed. It would have impacts on undeveloped land going forward, but again, it's relatively similar to what we already have. So this would bring our bylaw in compliance with DEP, uh, at the request of the Water District.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bernie?
I don't.
No.
Do, is there, is, you know, we, there was conversation unrelated to all this about the, um, earth removal permits, and I that didn't, that didn't get through town meeting, is there, is, is the plan, we're planning on revisiting that?
Nope.
Okay.
The planning board said, you know, I, I, there was some discussion about that, and the planning board said, we made our effort, and if anybody wants it, they're welcome to have the work that we did, and they can move it forward. But I, I got the impression from the board that they were, they were kinda...
They were all set.
They were all set, yeah.
Okay. I know that, I, I, I know that, I know.
I mean, a 15-fold increase, or, I'm sorry, a, a 150-fold increase in, in the threshold, and that didn't seem to give people enough comfort that, uh, the board was making an effort to be reasonable, uh, and I think put a, a hair in uncomfortable place for the planning board.
I know. I, I think I contributed to that, so, I know. Yep, um, and that's something that, you know, maybe we should take up at a certain point, 'cause obviously 10 cubic yards is not enough, you know?
No, it's, I mean, it's one triaxal.
Yeah, no one's actually, everyone's doing way more than that. If you ever see a house get built, it's...
Well, now, so there are exemptions, and there were exemptions in the proposal. And anything associated with a subdivision permit, a building permit, or a septic system were exempt from the earth removal bylaw. Because those removals are governed by other laws that review the things that a, a, an earth removal bylaw theoretically would also review. So I don't think there was any attempt to remove those exemptions, uh, especially subdivisions, building, and, and septic. Because those are, those happen all the time, and if everybody had to get an earth removal permit for those, you folks would be inundated, and it, it would just be unwieldy for everyone.
But, you know, we have some building permits that are open for like 16 years, don't we?
Well, uh, not that jump out at me.
I'll talk to you.
Okay, yeah, I, 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 not that I can, not that I'm, not that I'm coming across. Well, there's one that I know that's been open for a while, but that's a whole separate issue, that's not earth removal.
Yeah, it's not earth removal. Okay, I think we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
All right, well, I don't have any other questions, uh, thank you, Mr. Bernie.
Thank you.
For your time tonight.
All right, have a nice night.
All right.
Thank you, Adam.
Please tell Marjorie I say hello. All right. So we can come back to this, uh, topic if we wanna go back up to number four. Interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations.
Uh, before the board tonight, I'm asking for ratification of two appointments, both for board clerk, secretary positions, one for Danielle Marr, and the other for Andrea Mastro Totoro. Danielle has eight, over eight years of experience in administration, most recently at the Middlesex DA's office. She will be taking the minutes for the Stormwater Task Force and the Economic Development Committee. And Andrea Mastro Totoro has 23-plus years of administrative experience for, and also including, including doing minutes for various municipal boards and committees. So I would request the board ratify these appointments tonight.
All right, thank you for providing that information, um, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Franco. Any questions, comments, or motions?
No questions or comments.
No questions or comments. And if Mr. Dwyer doesn't have any, I'll, I'll make the motions.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move to appoint, uh.
To ratify.
To ratify the appointments, yes. I'm getting a little, little tired here. Of Danielle Marr for board clerk slash secretary as presented by the town manager.
I would ask that you do both at the same time?
Uh, okay. If I can have an assist pronouncing the other last name.
And Andrea Mastro Totoro?
Ma- Mastro Totoro, yes, and Andrea Mastro.
That was good.
Italian twist.
Mastro Totoro.
Second.
Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Sorry.
Been a long day.
Any opposed? All right, uh, the ratification passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And to the town manager's report, the nice summarized version.
Great. I'll go as quickly as possible. The existing vacancies, we have two vacancies now on the architectural preservation district commission, one vacancy on the council on aging, one vacancy on the economic development committee, one regular member vacancy, and two associate vacancies on the green communities committee, three vacancies on the historical commission, and one associate vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. Anyone interested can fill out an application form, it's found on the town website, submit it to the select board's office, and if you have any questions on these volunteer opportunities, you can contact the select board's office as well. Current employment opportunities, currently posted are positions for the conservation administrator, our current administrator is retiring at the end of May, and this is a full-time benefitted position, a digital service staff librarian position, this is a part-time benefitted position, the DPW director position, which is a full-time benefitted position, seasonal cemetery labors, uh, which are non-benefited positions, seasonal lifeguards, which are non-benefited positions, the trash and recycling coordinator position, which I'll touch on after, the van driver, part-time, non-benefited, which, um, we may be filling that shortly, and videographers, part-time, non-benefited positions. And information on these positions, positions can be found on the town website, which is where you can apply and when that's, when applications are accepted by, or early preference. The trash and recycling coordinator, due to the lack of qualified respondents, I'm looking right now to outsource this as, um, for consulting-type service, and, um, especially since this is driven by grant money, it would probably be the most useful, and, um, hoping to get that position filled, and that will help with our contract administration, with Yale Harvey as well, and our recycling, which we need to refocus on, because we're doing a, a poor job at recycling now.
Do you want to give that update about contamination?
Yes, that's in my, yeah. That's a lengthy.
Before we get too much further, I want to ask you about the DPW director position. So I know, I know this position has been vacant for six days. Only six business days. But we did post this job, you know, once I think Mr. Oliver provided his notice. What is your expectation on when you will be at the point of reviewing resumes? I'm not sure if you have any insight into what's coming in, are you getting applications?
I can say we're actively trying to fill the position.
What is that?
We're trying to fill the position. Yeah, it's definitely a limited pool.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Update on the tax lien sale. This, it went forward on March seventeenth, and, um, at the beginning of the tax sale process, there were fifty properties with back taxes totaling one million fifty-eight thousand seventy-seven dollars. The tax collector collected three hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars against twenty-six of the properties. Seven properties entered into payment agreements, ten properties will move to foreclosure, and seven tax liens were purchased by Talage, which is an auction company totaling fifty thousand seven twenty-eight. Only three of the four properties that the board agreed to remove from the tax lien auction list were, are moving forward in the foreclosure process, because 101 Pleasant Street paid the outstanding taxes.
How big was 101 Pleasant, was that the super-large one, was that like the three-acre one? Do you remember?
This is a larger.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, we can look it up. Thank you.
Curbside trash and recycling update, the assistant town manager, DPW administrative assistant, and I met with the vice president of Yale Harvey and the municipal manager last Thursday to review a list of outstanding issues on trash and recycling, including reports of Yale Harvey leaving bins that were too far from the curb, um, as well as tags from another town's, with another town's name on them, knocked-over bins that were left, and inconsistent customer service messages. Yale Harvey is going to, said they were going to immediately address with the drivers that complained about the bins that were too far from the curb, the knocked-over bins where trash was left, um, as well as making sure their correct tags were issued to the drivers to leave, um, uh, on that issue, and speak with their customer service with more of a scripted message on messaging. We're getting consistent messages to our, our public. I had requested a log of all the incidents since our contract began, and one to be sent weekly going forward, and I did receive, and I, um, this is updated since this afternoon, that I did receive a full report going back to July, and, um, they will be submitting that weekly going forward. That helps us reconcile our calls and reports with their log as well. We also addressed that residents have been receiving contrary messages from customer service staff, including being told Yale Harvey does not replace bins that were damaged by the truck driver. That is incorrect, they do replace the bins, and the customer would need to contact customer service and get, um, email address to request that, um, bin replaced as well as a pitcher, and they'll replace those bins. Another issue was the private road pickup. The, now that winter's ended, they are picking up at all private road locations, so that's the primary issue with private road pickup. We discussed, um, giving them a list of all the private roads that are in the contract, the number of residences on each of those roads, they were gonna review that, try to find a solution for that in plenty of time for next winter, uh, so we don't encounter this again. And it may mean that, uh, the service location is changed to the end of the road, or whatever will work in order for them to get service, so that would be, um, going forward. So we'll be revisiting that, um, after they have time to come up with a, a workaround. And the last item we discussed was communication. We stress that we need to know that end of the day to get that message out to the public, as far as what to expect if there were missed routes, um, because that was inconsistent over this winter. And we'll also be putting out information on where bins need to be placed, because that's all contractual as well, that they, um, they shouldn't be in the driveway, the drivers shouldn't be going up dri- walking up driveways and pull down bins, which has been the case in some situations, um, they shouldn't be in front of the post, um, mailboxes, so we, we need to communicate that as well. And the recycling, um, finally, is the last piece that we really need to work on. We, looks, from what they're picking up, we have a very high contamination rate right now, people putting in scrap metal, helmets, dirty diapers, um, food, contaminant food.
Dirty diapers, I can't figure that one.
I know, when I heard that one, I was like, you can't think that's a recycle. And, um, the, our biggest, which was our biggest contaminant, was, uh, plastic bags the last time as well, so people, um, we need to re-educate the public as well, so we're gonna work on that. And at the end of the meeting, um, the vice president did apologize, uh, more than once in saying this was unacceptable, this is not how they wanted their, um, how their company operates, and how our contract should not be starting out with the town. So, they have been responsive and, um, hopeful that, you know, as we go through these, and there's been a number of issues that we'll address them as we go along.
So, if we can just stop here for a second. Thank you. I think that this has been a concern from so many people in town, and I mean, the highlights of what you just said is that trash is now being picked up on all the roads that are listed in the contract, um, that as we go into next year, that, that we will need to, that they are gonna work on what the solution will be for next winter, um, that they're looking through the logs, they're forwarding over all those, all those issues, they're working on the messaging that they send out to residents, and all of this, underlying all this, is setting appropriate expectations for people. Because, you know, as I said last time, I say it's often, you know, frustration, um, frustration is the result of mismatch expectations, and then anger is frustration on steroids, that, you know, things don't go the way you expect them to go, something happens the way you don't expect it to happen, so you get frustrated. And so, you know, a lot of frustration is avoidable with appropriate expectation setting. And I know this was a lot of work on your part, uh, so I just want to thank you and the team you work with to get this done.
I thank my team as well.
Did I echo that?
Updates on stormwater and asset management grant that the town received. So our stormwater consultant from CEI provided a written report that was provided to the stormwater task force. This was all on the status of year four task, and that was given for their, in time for their meeting last week. I'm taking Todd's, uh, report, committee report.
Perfectly fine.
So there were some follow-up questions that, um, the land use director, uh, he actually did put those together today and forwarded those to the consultant, so, um, intend to respond for their next meeting, and hopefully attends, he hopes to attend the next meeting, stormwater task meeting. We were also recently noticed, notified that we received an asset management grant in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five dollars, of which seventy-six thousand six hundred and five is funded through the DEP's state revolving fund, and the remainder fifty-one thousand four hundred is through the town's match. Part of that, the twenty-one thousand nine hundred, um, has been identified in year five work that can go towards our match of that grant, and an additional thirteen thousand that's in, under the stormwater line item in the budget. So there's no additional appropriation needed for FY twenty-three, or, there's no changes to the budget as it stands now. So this project, um, essentially lays the foundation for a complete asset management program plan, so it's a really good first step towards that.
Great.
Yes. COVID nineteen update, the weekly update from the Board of Health, and the total number of new cases as of March twelfth was eight, and the positivity rate was one point four three percent. In meetings, events, and other announcements, there will be a pet rabies clinic put on by the Nishoba Associate Boards of Health on Saturday, March twenty-sixth, from twelve PM to two PM at the Townsend Highway Department, which is at one seventy-seven Main Street. Yard waste collection dates, days at Young's Road will begin Saturdays starting April sixteenth until May twenty-first, and the collection is open eight AM until four PM. The Lunenburg Lions Club will host a Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April sixteenth, from eleven AM until one PM in the field between the TCP Building and Kids Kingdom. There'll be face painting and light refreshments provided, and this event is for Lunenburg residents only. The finance committee will be having their public hearing on the budget, annual town meeting articles on March thirty-first at seven PM, and the planning board will be holding their public hearing on their three articles on April eleventh in the town hall at six oh five PM.
All right, any questions to the town manager on the report?
None.
All right. Thank you, thank you Heather for that.
You're welcome.
All right, um, I kinda want to go to old business before we go to current business, because I think current business is a little administrative. For old business, if we can start with those, um, so Conrad's Colin Vic, and if you wouldn't mind, just providing an update on that.
Yes, so last meeting I reported that, um, payment of back taxes was paid as well as a payment agreement. The tax collector has asked me to, asked the board to hold off one more week on that, because there was a hold on the, uh, check that was towards that, hasn't cleared yet. So, uh, we had it already on the agenda for the hearing for next week, um, that if, that will allow enough, enough time to clear that.
Okay, do you need us to do anything on that tonight?
No, I would just say table that for tonight, until next meeting.
Are we all in agreement to table this?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Okay, uh, discussion on next year's budget, capital plan, financial forecast, annual town meeting warrant articles, I saw that some new things came in, um, but my opinion, I think we should discuss this next week.
I agree.
Unless there's something pressing? All right, I think that we, that's it, all right. So going back to, um, current business, approval of minutes for March the eighth, um, were there any other modifications? Is this, no, this isn't it. The minutes. Are there any other modifications to the minutes, do you have? All right, so if not, if we can, uh, if there's a motion, in a second.
I don't see the hand copy.
Hold off on this approval till next week, we have them this time.
I think you can approve them, you just, yeah. Technically, you don't have to sign them.
Okay.
I move we accept the minutes as presented for March eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And unopposed, all right. It passes, thank you. Warrants.
No warrant.
No warrants. Action items. I have one. So every, every year, I, I say this after the fact, so I'm trying to be ahead of the game on this one. So we have Earth Day coming up, and it would be great if we can get some kind of community service project going. I know that we don't have a DPW director, and that would be really helpful, and I don't have capacity to get this thing going, but is it, so I guess mostly I'm just kinda talking to everyone at home, um, specifically to the school committee as well, that if there is any interest in getting a community service program going for Monday, I think that's April the eighteenth, which is part of the school vacation week, uh, which is Earth Day, is also the day of the marathon, I believe, that that would be great. Uh, as we come out of the winter, we're probably noticing all the trash on the sides of the roads, uh, which will be largely inaccessible by the middle to end of May, when everything starts growing again. So it would be great if we can try to get this done, uh, so if anyone's interested in spearheading this, uh, out in the community, that would be excellent.
I actually bring that up, um, I spoke with a student, um, as part of our civics, uh, high school civics project, was on pollution, and, um, she asked, you know, community-wide what, you know, that something could be done, um, and obviously education for me is number one, as far as, uh, because recycling leads to pollution as well. But, um, what I do with, um, one of my kids annually is go on, just take a section of our road, take thirty minutes, an hour of your time, if everybody did that and cleaned up a little bit of your section of your road, there'd be a lot less pollution.
Yeah. And we do it, so. All right, perhaps we can get that message out there. I can reach out to, to probably Mary Foil, uh, who kinda runs that on the high school level, to see if there's some interest in picking that up. Is the board okay if we send a communication to the school committee as well, asking for support of this?
Yes.
Yes.
Good idea. All right. Any committee, any other action items? Committee reports?
Well, I had a great stormwater task force for, uh, report, uh, ready to go, uh, but largely our, our meeting, um, centered around reviewing CEI's report that, uh, Heather outlined in her report. We also, the other item on our agenda is we're looking to, uh, make our webpage on the town website a little more user-friendly, so we discussed that, and our next meeting is, I think, the third Thursday in April.
Uh, I attended my first school committee meeting last Thursday, and it was a real doozy. Went for three hours and thirty-seven minutes.
Not fair counting.
But I don't know exactly how long it was, I don't know if it was in twenty seconds or forty seconds, but, uh, anyway, multiple presentations were given at that meeting. Really, that meeting was about me hoping to stick my toe in the water and kinda get my bearings and get, and, and, I'd never been to one before, so, uh, so I was getting oriented and, you know, learning, learning who the people are and all, but there were four presentations given, the final recommended, uh, superintendent budget, um, and, uh, presentation on equity, operations and communications presentation. um, and, uh, Presentation on Equity, Operations and Communications Presentations were the three that stood out. So I don't really have anything specific to report, because anything that, you know, budgetary or whatever, we're going to see, we're going to see anyway, so. And I don't know if this is a, it's not really a report, because it didn't happen already, or if this is a, uh, public comment at the end, but the, uh, I'll make it now anyway. The, uh, Economic Development Committee will meet this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Ritter.
All right, so I have a couple. So first, MPO, so MPO met last week and I, uh, last Tuesday, and I could not attend. They, I certainly tried to, but they do their meeting on go-to meeting. And I, I couldn't get the software to work. I called in, apparently, the, uh, Brad Harris, who runs these meetings, also couldn't get the software to work. And it sounded like six people were able to get on as far as town representation. So, uh, I did send them an email that says, hey, why not use Zoom or Teams like 90% of everyone else? You know, um, go-to meetings isn't a good, isn't a good platform. So I don't have an update there, other than that. MART, my update is that they had a meeting today, however, I could not attend because I have a conflict with MART, and I have to come off of being the representative. So MART leases property that I manage, and so I cannot, I, I'm negotiating a lease with them. So I unfortunately cannot remain their representative for MART. Library met last Thursday, so, uh, there was a presentation for the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library, uh, and they're looking for new members, so if anyone in town is interested in joining the Friends, certainly reach out to the library, they can direct you on how to do that. Uh, I believe there's also a Facebook page, well, they're looking to get a Facebook page going. So, um, one of the things that they're trying to target as well is doing a native plant sale this year. Uh, there's a little bit of challenges around getting it going because the availability or lack of availability of a lot of the seeds and plants. Um, but they are looking to have that, so there's more information coming on there. The library has a vacancy, as mentioned, for a digital assistant. There was a question about how the back pay for the Clerker Union will be paid, uh, if it will come from their operating account or from a salary reserve.
It will come with, from within the fiscal '22 budget.
Okay. And so that was one of their questions. I'm sure Muir will get back to you, or you get back to him on that one. And then, uh, they also noted that utility costs are a little bit lower than projected. There's one thing I got to talk to you offline about. So there was also, they, they discussed Canopy, which is an online resource that's basically a collection of videos that members of the public, anyone, can access. And so this is like videos that you'd rent from Netflix or whatever. So more than 7,000 site visits, uh, and 8,700 films have been accessed as the program was rolled out a little over a year ago. So that's pretty remarkable to think about, that many people watching free videos. So if you're at home and, and you don't know that this is an option for you, Canopy is a, is a way to get some videos and might save you some money on Netflix, unless you like Netflix original content. And then, uh, there's also, they're exploring Mango Languages, which will help residents learn a new language, so similar to like, um, what's that? Rosetta? So similar to that concept, that there will be a free software system that once this gets up and going in another month or two, for residents in town to be able to learn, uh, a new language for free. So that is a great thing. And the other update is Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. So we met last night. It was, um, very, I thought, productive meeting, the first, uh, hour, 15 minutes or so. Uh, we met with Jamie Toll and, um, and Dave McDonald, who are members of the Building Reuse Committee. And they met to go over kind of the timeline of what they worked on, uh, on the Building Reuse Committee to kind of give some insight into the, into the membership of where they made some good progress, areas that, that they didn't touch upon, so that way we're not replicating work. And then, um, the second half of the meeting, we talked about, um, the VERTEX reports as well as the TAPA study, and we broke down, or rather, assigned, uh, each of those reports to like a subcommittee of two members, uh, with the expectation being that over the next couple of weeks, we're going to extract, um, the Town Manager has already done this, but this is a secondary effort, um, in which they're going to extract all of the recommendations that are in these reports to come up with a detailed list. So that way, any, all, any solution or any option that comes out of the committee incorporates these needed changes to the Ritter, to the Town Hall as well. So that way, it's part of the solution. So that is, I thought, a very good, healthy meeting. Next meeting of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee will happen in two weeks, uh, at the beginning of April 1st and 3rd meetings. Meetings are the 1st and 3rd Mondays generally, uh, of every month, at 6:00 PM on Zoom. And how long can we continue to meet on Zoom before we have to have a in-person meeting as well?
Uh, you mean without a quorum present?
Correct.
In person? And as long as the state allows. So right now, it's July 1, I think, is the date.
So up until July, we can contain a meet?
Unless they extend that again. They keep extending it.
All right, and that's all that I have for committee reports. Our upcoming meetings are April the 5th, uh, for the Select Board, April the 5th, April the 12th, April the 19th. Uh, as a reminder, we do have town meeting coming up the first Saturday, uh, in May. Any public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Passios, looks like you're still on, uh, Zoom here as well.
Sorry about that. Uh, Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, before you as the Parks Commissioner this evening. Yeah. Just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, next Tuesday evening here in this room, we will, and on Zoom, uh, we will have another Parks meeting. The two major topics, excuse me, for that evening will be, uh, another review of the Marshall Park Master Plan that is in its third draft, I believe, at this point, with two options. Uh, and a little more discussion on that. Uh, the other very important item that will be discussed, uh, is the, um, issue with the Town Beach Building. And, um, that will be fully vetted that evening. Uh, we've got some structural problems that may or may not be able to be repaired before we're ready to open the beach. Uh, so we're trying to work through that and the alternative if that building is not ready for use at that time. So that's it for Parks. Trying to see if I had any other notes. Uh, that's it for that. I'd like to, like to make one, uh, personal comment about the MBTA, uh, discussion or bill or whatever that was that you discussed earlier today. I had actually seen that in newspaper articles a month ago. But one of the things that I drew out of it was that, one of the things I think in the background that the state's trying to do is increase ridership on the MBTA by concentrating population close to the MBTA system. So just keep that as my thought, anyway, personal thought. Thank you.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, well, if they had reliable service, people would probably ride it.
We are a little spoiled here in the Northeast. I mean, there's, there's 2,800 miles between Philadelphia and California that has no mass transit system like we have, other than Chicago. So we are pretty, we're pretty spoiled.
Spoiled if it's reliable. Any public comments from the boards tonight?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, I have one. So, um, there was a resident request about to get an update on how the caucus went. And so what I will say is that there was a caucus, uh, last Monday, and I'm going to do a plug for the Lunenburg Ledger. So, the Lunenburg Ledger posted all of the results of the caucus, and, you know, I, I really think that the Ledger does an extraordinary job of providing residents in town with a good update, factual updates on what's going on. I think that their reporting is accurate, certainly. You know, we don't get any kickbacks or anything from them, but they are a local source of news and information for residents, and it's, it's really dependent upon residents, you know, subscribing to the paper. It's a very affordable subscription. You can have digital, also have it mailed to your house, or a combination of both. So I would encourage all residents to pick up the latest copy of the Lunenburg Ledger to find out the results of the, uh, of the caucus. And if you're not currently a member, to consider subscribing, so that way we can keep this paper viable for years to come. I will, any comments from the Town Manager tonight?
None.
All right, and so it is ready for us to adjourn? Is there a motion? In a second.
I will happily move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, and none opposed, so that is it for this evening. Thank you all, and, uh, have a wonderful evening, and we will see you here in just a couple, uh, more weeks. Have a good night.